Gathered again to express their views. I know I went to one in Yarmouth Port that was held at the Yarmouth Port Fire Station where it was standing room only and an excellent opportunity for people to get back to the old ways of communicating. We, the Yarmouth Solarized Plus has been able to create their initiative with more meetings and more outreach. We, we had a large audience gathered for the extremely important signing of Nero's Law that was attended by Governor Baker.
(Applause).
Yep. This past Saturday, we had over 100 people attended the town cleanup in town, which is a tremendous turnout to the, and I helped on Seagull Beach and I had to keep telling my wife she didn't have to pick up seaweed. It was just trash. So the seaweed is still there. And probably most importantly, or most significantly, not importantly, but was the St. Patrick's Day Parade, which was a record turnout. It shows what kind of a community we have. And how do I know that it was a record turnout? Because I read it in the Cape Cod Times. That's how I know. So I guess I'd like to acknowledge that this community, Yarmouth, is back. So thank all of you. And we hear a lot about division, but this is not divided at all. We are all united. And in order to celebrate that and honor that, I'd like to ask you to all stand and join me in our Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. Let me start by some, some basic introductions of the people on the stage so you know who we are. To my right is Mary Maslowsky, the Town Clerk. Behind me is the Finance Committee, Acting Chairman Stephanie Cox. I can't see George Perkins, Jack Moylan, and Nathan Ladley. I think our Town Council, Jay Tellerman, is somewhere. I see him on the stage. And to my left is our esteemed Board of Select Persons, starting, I'll go in order of how they're sitting. Peter Smith, Tracy Post. I can't actually see him. Chairman Mark Forrest? Nope. There's Mark. Yep. Mike Stone and Dan Horgan. And there is Jay at the end of the table there. So, and I just, yeah, I'm going to introduce Mark in a second. Again, I just wanted to reiterate the protocols because I'm not going to go over them again during the course of the meeting if something comes up. You can see it on the screen. But let me now turn it over to Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mark Forrest.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our town meeting. On behalf of the entire Board of Selectmen, I want to welcome you. This year's town meeting brings us back to a growing sense of normalcy, you could say, both in terms of returning to our regular town meeting schedule as well as presenting a full warrant and budget as we cautiously emerge from the worst impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. We remain cautious because we're still susceptible to outbreaks of new variants, but we are happy to say that our community transmission rates are continuing to decline. We're happy to report to you this year that we are in, we are presenting a fully balanced budget with no need for an override. We have been able to accomplish this through a lot of hard work with each of our departments and all our regional partners. In addition to the major financial budget items such as the operating and capital budgets for the town, we will be presenting and discussing some other critical financial measures to help fund our upcoming wastewater treatment project without impacting property taxes. The Historical Commission will also be making a presentation tonight on our town seal, and our planning board and staff will offer some important zoning amendments. As you will hear in the presentations for each of these articles, our staff and the many volunteers that serve on our town committees have put in a considerable amount of work and thought into the proposals that are being presented tonight here at Town Meeting. So on behalf of the entire board, I want to express my appreciation for all of their hard work, all the work that went into presenting the warrant tonight and for getting ready for this town meeting. But more importantly, we want to thank you, the voters of Yarmouth, for being here, for participating in our town meeting. And while the future of democracy may be in question in some places around the world, it is alive and well right here in the town of Yarmouth. Once again, thank you for your attendance this evening. Mr. Moderator, I yield back.
Thank you, Chairman Forrest. And I really didn't forget them. I just saved them till last because they've done so much work on this. Our Town Administrator, Bob Rittenhour, and our Assistant Town Administrator, Bill Scott, at the end of the table there. So let's begin the proceedings with Article One. Chairman Forrest?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article One as printed in the warrant.
We have a second. Do we have a Selectmen?
The Selectmen recommend five to zero.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends four zero.
Explanation?
Mr. Moderator, the purpose of this article is to fund any budget shortages for the current year. The supplemental funding for construction and demolition materials is needed to cover a higher than anticipated or expected volume of waste material that the town has received over the years. The C and D expense is covered by the revenues that are paid to dispose of these materials. The supplemental funding for snow and ice is needed to cover the costs associated with several long-duration road treating events.
Do we have any questions or comments? And I should point out, favor of Article One, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Article Two, the municipal budget. What we'll do here is we have in your warrant book, there's several pages of budget items. We're going to try to break them into, we're going to take one vote. Hopefully, the vote will be the total budget, which you'll find is a little excess of $44 million. We're going to go through the four components of this budget. As you walk through it or look through it, please raise your hand if you want to hold and discuss any individual item, and then we'll take it once we get to the end of that section. So Section One will be in your book on page six. We'll do page six and seven together, which is the budgets for moderator, selectmen, town administrator, finance, central purchasing, town accountant, assessors, collector, treasurer, town clerk, election and registration. Okay. Go to the next page, page eight, and feel free if you missed something to come back to it. Page eight, we'll just take that page, which is community development, general library, natural resources, senior services, recreation. Okay. The next component, we'll do page nine, which is, the vast majority is public safety, which is police and fire, which represents about 30% of our total town budget, and then municipal inspections. So you have police, fire, municipal inspections. Okay. We'll finish up with pages 10 and 11, which is information technology, Department of Public Works, which includes administrative engineering, highway, snow and ice, facilities, sanitation, parks, cemetery, and we'll throw in debt service. Grand total budget, $44,233,329. Now, I just ran through that in the interest of efficiency. I'm going to turn the motion over to Chairman Forrest.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, I am required to read a lengthy motion for Article Two in order to identify, for the record, the funding sources of various line items in this article. The motion will be on the screen so that you may follow along. So I move the various sums under the column headed FINCOM FY 2022, excuse me, 2023, be appropriated for the respective purposes and to fund such article with funding from taxation, local receipts, and the following appropriations and transfers. And now I'm going to read the list of the transfers. Transfer the sum of $3,500 from the Wetlands Protection Fund for CD-1 community development wages. Transfer the sum of $3,500 from the Waterways Improvements Fund for C3, CS3, natural resources wages. Transfer the sum of $50,000 from ferry tax for CS-3, natural resource wages. Transfer the sum of $1.5 million from ambulance reserve for appropriation for PS-5, fire department wages. Transfer the sum of $15,000 from the Gifford Cemetery Fund for PW-15 cemetery wages. Transfer the sum of $25,000 from the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund for PW-16 cemetery expenses. And the last transfer is for the sum of $5,000 from the Cemetery Sale of Lots Funds for PW-16 cemetery, cemetery expenses. And the grand total of the transfers is $1,602,000.
Thank you, Chairman Forrest. We have a motion? Seconded? Any questions or comments? Did I hear something? Take a vote? Oh, we have a comment?
We actually didn't hear the official motion.
Can you please identify yourself in your precinct?
Yeah, Tom Sullivan, Precinct One. We didn't actually hear the motion. Mr. Forrest ended it. So I'll make a motion to accept the article as read and printed in the article.
Okay. My oversight, I forgot to ask the Board of Selectmen.
Second again.
Okay. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends four zero.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I'll get this one right. Article Three, Chairman Forrest.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article Three as printed in the warrant.
Board of Selectmen?
Five to zero.
Finance Committee?
Four to zero.
Explanation?
The article is the operating budget for the Gulf Division and funds the employee salaries, benefits, and other Gulf operating expenses. This year's budget is funded entirely by Gulf fees and other revenues that are generated by the Gulf Division.
Everybody had a chance to look at it? Any questions? Comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries with one or two votes noted. Negative. Article Four, Chairman Forrest?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article Four as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Board of Selectmen?
Five to zero. In favor?
Finance Committee?
Four zero in favor.
Explanation?
This article is the operating budget for the Water Division of the Department of Public Works, which funds the department, the division's salaries, benefits, and other water operating expenditures. The Water Division operates as a distinct special revenue fund, much like Gulf, and septic operations, and is, it's, is fully funded by water fees.
Questions? Comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article Five, Chairman Forrest?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article Five as printed in the warrant.
Here, second. Board of Selectmen?
Recommends five to zero.
Finance Committee?
Recommends four to zero.
Explanation?
Mr. Moderator, this is the operating budget for the septic treatment plant, which is treated as an enterprise fund. The costs are fully covered by fees charged to contractors that dispose of septic waste at the plant. This enterprise fund, like the others, like Gulf and water, is fully supported by fee revenue.
Questions? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Article Six, Chairman Forrest?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town raise and appropriate $39,590,105 and transfer from free cash $202,330 for a total of $39,792,435 to fund the Dennis Yarmouth Regional School District budget for fiscal year 2023.
Motion's been seconded. Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends five to zero.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends four to zero.
Explanation?
Mr. Moderator, this article funds the town's share of the Dennis Yarmouth Regional School District. The FY 2023 assessment is based on the revised regional agreement. The sum of $202,330 will come from free cash as a one-time payment of a short note. The rest will come from the tax levy.
We interview questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, my comment is-
Please identify, please identify yourself, even if we know you.
Let me check. My name is Phil Morris, Precinct Three, now that we do maps. I'm Treasurer of the Dennis Yarmouth Regional School Committee. On behalf of the Dennis Yarmouth Regional School Committee, I want to thank the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen, the Yarmouth Finance Committee, our Town Administrator and his team, and you, the taxpayer, for your supporting the school's district budget. Your support leads to our students' success. This morning, we were notified that the Dennis Yarmouth Regional High School has achieved status as a U.S. News Best High School for 2022. (Applause) Thank you. The U.S. News rankings include data on nearly 24,000 public high schools in 50 states and the District of Columbia. Your Dennis Yarmouth High School was in the top 20% of these schools. The highest-ranked U.S. public schools in the U.S. News and World Report 2022 Best High School rankings are above, are those students who have demonstrated outstanding outcomes above expectations in math, reading, and science state assessments, earned qualifying scores in an array of college-level exams, and graduated in high proportions. For DY, the total minority enrollment is 36%, and our students outperformed the state of Massachusetts on the science assessments. As a career sector, science fields offer many opportunities for top-paying jobs. The U.S. News states that a great high school educates all students from different social and economic backgrounds, exposing them to challenging coursework on the path to graduation. At DY, students have the opportunity to take advanced placement coursework and exams. The advanced placement participation rate for seniors at DY was 30%. If we include our juniors, the AP participation increases to 40%. We continue to work with college partners through dual enrollments, allowing students to each college credit to earn college credit while still at the high school. U.S. News lists DY graduation rate at 97%. Many of you are aware that we focus on the whole student. Our students have won additional honors in visual and performing arts throughout the year. Our marching band, color guard, winter guard, and winter percussion all perform at the highest standard for groups of their size. As Ken Jenks used to say, "This doesn't start at the high school. The high school is our finishing school." And our students get a high-quality experience throughout their years in the DY system that culminates in the successes you have just heard. For more information, I invite you to review our handout, which we distributed just recently. This year, our budget increase is 1.3% for Yarmouth. We are working hard to be good stewards of your hard-earned money. Thank you for your past support. You have helped us to create those quality experiences for our students. I ask for your support for the 2023 budget request as printed in the warrant. Thank you very much.
Any, any other comments or questions? Thank you, Mr. Morris. Okay, we ready to vote now? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Article Seven will be presented by Selectman Dan Horgan.
Good evening. Mr. Moderator, I'd move that the town raise and appropriate $4,183,543 to fund the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School District budget for FY 2023.
Motion's been made and seconded. Board of Selectmen?
Recommend five zero.
Finance Committee?
Recommends four zero.
Yes. We'll recognize Ms. Greeley.
I'm Christine Greeley, Precinct Six. I'm a school committee member for the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School. With me is our Superintendent of Schools, Bob Sanborn. Norm Shad, who is unable to attend today, and I are the Yarmouth Representatives to your vocational school, Cape Cod Tech, located very conveniently off Route Six at exit, I guess, 82 now. Lord knows, I don't know those numbers anymore. Superintendent Sanborn and I are here to present the FY 23 budget assessment.
Yeah, we used to be at Exit 10, but we moved 72 miles down Route Six. The budget increase is, represents a 1.99% increase overall over last year. However, due to, unfortunately, an 11-student decrease from the students of Yarmouth, the operating assessment for the town of Yarmouth, which would be fortunately in this fiscally, has declined by 11.9% to, as you can see, or was on the screen, $2,805,234. And the capital assessment for our now second year in our new school, and I would be remiss if I didn't once again thank all the voters in Yarmouth and in all the 12 towns that supported our project back in 2017, and I invite you to come on over. So the, the capital assessment for that facility has decreased by, for the town of Yarmouth, 13.2% to $1,378,309. And that's for 148 students from the town of Yarmouth.
Our mission is technical education with a priority on academic achievements to support our students and their goals, whether for careers, college, or post-secondary training. We invite you to meet our chefs of tomorrow while lunching in our Hidden Cove Restaurant, visiting our future cosmetologists in our salon, or by using our auto technicians in training in our full-service automotive shop. Due to COVID restrictions, however, our current hours for these services are based and are listed on our website, so please go onto the website to check for them. We are educating and training dental and health technicians, carpenters, plumbers, electricians, and marine service, and HVAC technicians for gainful living wage employment here on Cape Cod and availability for us as homeowners.
This, this has been a major year of accomplishments from both state and national competitions. We would especially like to recognize the achievements of our Yarmouth students this year. Our Abigail Adams Scholarship winners, Breno DeMello, Jason Dauss, Dia Dari, Eric Duart, Brianna Gatis, Gabriel Simones, Adrian Stever, and Teia Tripp. And then our National Technical Honor Society status was achieved by Shannon Hardy, who is also a Skills USA officer.
There were significant Skills USA district and state accomplishments this year, and the winners included the President's Volunteer Service Awards to Shannon Hardy, Alyssa Bach and Sophia Dolan, bronze medals to Jason White in the Automotive Service Technology, Alyssa Bach as a state qualifier in collision damage appraisal, Aubrey Hool was in customer service, and Dalton Hoyle was a state qualifier for the Marine Service Technology. Gold medals went to Kyle Millville, who was a state qualifier in major appliance technology. Our Future Farmers of America also did very well this year, won major, major awards, including Paloma Gauss Snyder for a Quiz Bowl Division Two Team second place, and Ally Toomey, who was a team demonstration in Division Two third place.
And finally, and thank you for indulging us once a year, because we are all the way down Route Six in Harwich. But I just want to, if you want to know more about our school, www.capetech.us. And invite, I invite all interested townspeople to visit our new facility, which we view as not only a high school, but also a community resource for our 12 towns. This has all been made possible by your past support. Thank you again.
Thank you. I, I think after the last two years, Superintendent Woodbury and her team, Superintendent Sanborn and his team deserve all of our- Superintendent Sanborn and his team deserve all of our thanks for having gotten through these two years and gotten through successfully. So, I guess I'd like to ask that we recognize the tremendous accomplishments, what they've done for the future leaders of our town. Thank you. We need to vote. All in favor of Article Seven? Say aye. All opposed? The article carries. Article Eight, Selectman Horgan?
Mr. Moderator, I'd move Article Eight is printed in the warrant.
We have a second. Board of Selectmen?
Recommend five zero.
Finance Committee?
Recommends four zero.
Explanation?
The Gulf Department capital expenses are related to maintenance obligations, which provide better safety, prevent the need for more costly projects in the future, and allow for safer and more effective onsite equipment service. The garage doors are not reliably functional, which creates problems for the service personnel. In addition, the lift is unable to effectively elevate all of the equipment, causing difficult repair circumstances. Lastly, the new trailer will provide a more reliable means to transport equipment, thus reducing the need for the equipment to be run over longer distances, which shortens their life. The total for these improvements is $135,000, the source of which is retained earnings through the Gulf Enterprise account. Therefore, property tax dollars are not necessary for these investments. The retained earnings account currently has $1,873,030 as a balance.
Thank you, Selectman Horgan. Questions? Comments? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Vote carries. Article Nine, Water Division Capital Expense.
Mr. Moderator, I'd move Article Nine is printed in the warrant.
Second, Select Board?
Selectmen recommend four to one.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends four zero.
This vote requires a two-thirds... Oh, okay, this is just a majority. Okay. Questions? Comments?
Mr. Moderator, would you like an explanation on the article?
Sure.
The Water Division capital expenses are related to the maintenance obligations, which will provide better safety, prevent the need for more costly projects in the future, provide for more accurate billing, and increase effectiveness of the distribution system. The total of these improvements is $1,094,500, which will result from the available balance in the Water Special Revenue Account. Therefore, property tax dollars are not necessary for these investments. The Water Special Revenue Account currently has $2.2 million as a balance.
Thank you. Questions? Comments? All in favor of Article Nine? Say aye. All opposed? The article carries. Article Ten, Water Main, Route Six A. I'm going to make a comment myself on this article before we get into it. Article Ten has to do, clearly, you'll hear more, it clearly has to do with water main construction on Route Six A. There's a contingent project based on the ultimate completion and duration of the water main project. The community in the Yarmouth Port Route Six A area has many questions, good questions, a very committed, devoted group of citizens. So, if there are questions or comments, normally they're related strictly to the verbiage of the article, which is a bond funding issue. However, should anyone from the entire town have any questions or comments that are related to the project, you will be allowed to make a comment for the record. The town departments will not be able to answer questions and rehash what's been done before, but we want to have the opportunity for people that care about this issue to be able to have their say if needs be. Now, I will say that this is being addressed and will be addressed, you know, that part of the project, but I did not want to short-circuit the opportunity to not let somebody have their say, given the specific verbiage in the article. So, with that, I will move to have the article read by Selectman Horgan.
Mr. Moderator, I'd move that the town vote that the sum of $3,800,000 be appropriated for the purpose of replacing the water main on a portion of Route Six A for an estimated distance of 1.8 miles, including all expenses incidental and related thereto pursuant to the Acts of 1928, Chapter 146, or under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 69B. And that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow such sum under General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 8, parentheses 5, or any other enabling authority, and issue bonds and notes of the town therefore. And further, that the Board of Selectmen and/or the Town Administrator are authorized to apply for and accept any federal, state, county, or other funds that may be available for this purpose, and to enter into intermunicipal or other agreements for acceptance of any such grants or funds, provided that the amount of the authorized borrowing shall be reduced by the amount of such grants or funds received prior to the issuance of bonds or notes under this vote.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend five zero.
Finance Committee?
Recommends four zero.
Okay. This will require a two-thirds majority vote. Are there any questions or comments?
Mr. Moderator, would you like a brief explanation on this?
Yeah, I keep forgetting that.
The Water Division proposes to replace the section of aging water infrastructure to prevent water shut-offs and water quality concerns due to water main breaks. This section of the main is one of the oldest mains in town, dating back to the 1930s. The main has reached the end of its useful life and experiences leaks or breaks several times per year, resulting in disruptions to both our water customers and to travelers on Route Six A. The new main will be properly sized for the fire flow needs and provide additional valving to minimize water customer disruptions in the future.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments? Can I see one? Yes.
Susan Starkey from Precinct One, and I wondered which part of Six A this is on, because I know in Yarmouth Port, where it looks like this, that's where this is, great. I want, it's important that the sidewalks also be considered at this time, and I think it's this mile, that the Town Planning Department just recently held a meeting with town residents and said that they would be trying to do sidewalk and road improvements at the same time. It's a shame to build or to do all that work and not make other improvements. Are there plans for these to happen at the same time?
I'll defer to Mr. Jeff Colby, the Department of Public Works.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jeff Colby, Public Works Director. There are plans that we're developing for other improvements associated with the surface after the water main is put in. Those are still being discussed with the community, so no definitive decisions have been made in that regard, but we'll continue that dialogue to determine what that future condition will look like as this project goes forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other question?
Comment?
Comment?
Betty Lentel, not a town voter, but I have a business on that section of Route Six A in Yarmouth Port, and in reference-
Excuse me, did you say you're not from Yarmouth?
I own a business on that section of Route Six A in Yarmouth Port.
The meeting is limited to-
Okay.
-Yarmouth residents and registered voters.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Rolf Anderson, District One. How much larger will these replacement pipes be in internal diameter than the existing ones?
Quick question. Mr. Colby? Or Lori Rosala?
The new main will be larger than the existing mains. The existing mains are a mix of eight- and 10-inch. The new main will be 12-inch. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Next?
Rebecca Mason, Precinct One. Do we have a timeline for this project?
Lori or Jeff? This particular water main project, yes?
Yes, this particular water main project. This funding is for design as well as construction, so we expect that if this does get approved, we'll be working on the design for the remainder of 2022, and we hope to do the construction of the water main in 2023.
Does that answer your question?
Yes. May I ask another?
Sure.
When it comes to the ancillary improvements that are proposed, do we know if everyone will be invited to those meetings?
Is your question about future meetings and being invited?
Just the publication of those.
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind answering that. Yes, for sure.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Christine Greeley, Precinct Six. That's a much longer stretch than 1.8 miles up there, so where specifically on Six A are you talking about the 1.8 miles?
Mr. Colby will answer that.
Yes, to be clear, that's from the Barnstable Town Line to West Yarmouth Road. That's the project limits of the project.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready to take a vote. This vote requires a two-thirds majority. All in favor? All opposed? The vote passes by a two-thirds majority. Thank you very much. Article 11, Selectman Horgan?
Mr. Moderator, I'd move Article 11 is printed in the warrant.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend five zero.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends four zero.
Explanation?
The Fire Department vehicles and life safety equipment are funded by the ambulance revenue. In addition to the above amount, supplemental funding for the mobile portable radios, $176,385 grant, and LifePak monitors, $197,245.41 grant, will result from two previously awarded grants with a combined total of $373,630.41. This article supports the first repayment to the stabilization for Engine 42, which was purchased back in 2021.
Have any questions or comments? Take a vote. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Article 12 is capital expense. I'll go through the formal procedure here. This is a little bit more complicated, but it's about, we have 30 articles. I'm going to take a short break at this spot here before capital. I want to acknowledge that we have three incredible people who probably won't be at our next town meeting, but they'll be somewhere much more enjoyable because they'll be retired. And these are three amazing leaders in our town. And I guess on behalf of myself, and I'm sure the town, I'd like to acknowledge our Director of Natural Resources, Carl Van Hone. All the wildlife in town can now come out of hiding. Our fire chief, who is awfully young to be retiring, I don't know, Mr. Philip Simonian. And I shouldn't have said last but not least, but does anybody know Chief Frank Fredrickson? They'll all have their day as they get closer to their retirement date, but this is such an opportunity for a community gathering to, I just couldn't let it slide by. So, on behalf of all of us, thank them for making this, making Yarmouth great. Article 12, Selectman Horgan?
Mr. Moderator, I'd move Article 12 is printed in the warrant.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend five zero.
Finance Committee?
Recommends four zero.
Okay. Explanation?
Mr. Moderator, this article funds the proposed FY 2023 Capital Improvement Program and miscellaneous transfers by raising and appropriating and transferring from free cash to support town operations.
You can see the capital appropriations on Pages 17 and 18 in the warrant. Very important item, very deserving of your time and attention, especially considering the amount of time that the Selectmen and the Capital Budget Committee put into it. So, please take a quick look, scan down, and you can comment on any individual item, or all items, or any, but please, I'm going to pause for about 38 seconds and give you a chance to look at them and see if you have any questions or comments. Hold your fire there. So again, Pages 17 and 18. Go to a question? Go ahead.
Vida Morris, Precinct One. I'd like to ask about number 14 voting tabulators. Wasn't, weren't these tabulators on a previous warrant here, either last fall or a year ago or something like that?
Mary Maslowsky will address this, our town clerk.
Mayor Maslowsky, Town Clerk. Ms. Morris, yes, there was an article, but it was for leasing or renting voting tabulators. This is specifically for us to buy new tabulators. Our existing tabulators are at their end of life, so we are getting ready to move forward with the next version of voting tabulators for the next 10 to 15 years, and that's what this is for.
Thank you. I also have a question on number 23, firearms shooting trailer. First of all, I'd like to ask if, is this a facility that was constructed and to be used not only by our own police personnel- used not only by our own police personnel, but also as training for, from other towns, for policemen from other towns? Or am I wrong? Is this something else? What exactly would this $319,000 cover?
I'll defer to Mr. Rittenhour, who can then defer, if he wants, to someone in the Police Department. Chief?
Chief Fredrickson, ladies and gentlemen.
What is your exact question?
What is this $319,000 for exactly? And whether this is one of the, you were erecting some facilities on the premises there to, for training purposes, as I remember, for your own personnel, and then possibly renting out to other, from other towns, for personnel from other towns. So is this one of those or is this something else?
No, this is a firearms range. It's a, almost a $700,000 piece of equipment, basically, which the Yarmouth Police Foundation is going to pay $300,000. They've committed that. So this is about a little more than 50% of the cost of that range. So we can do onsite training for our officers and a limited amount of people, departments in the region that could use it on a very sporadic basis.
Oh, but we would expect to get some money from the people using from other towns, right?
I would be reluctant to do that, to try to make it a money-making operation. The more we use it, the more it costs to maintain it. So I think the way we have it settled in to use it for our offices and a few people that might need it on a, on a spot instance where they can't get a range to train an officer or two, I think that we find, because we share services across Cape Cod for a lot of different reasons.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Next question?
Lizargo, Precinct Two. Can you tell us a little bit about the library and the feasibility study and what it is we're looking at?
Does Jane Kane want to handle that? Jane here? Hold on. Our Library Services Director, Jane Kane, will be answering that question. There is a slide that gives you a little bit more information on this, plus there was some material about the library.
Good evening. I'm Jane Kane, the Library Director for the Town of Yarmouth. I had to catch my breath. So as you may recall, about seven years ago, we held focus groups, meetings, listening sessions around the future of library services. And maybe you had a chance to participate and voice your opinion. No, I'm good. What we heard then, and what we hear again in the most recent community visioning project done with town planning and economic development, is that folks want modern technology in a suitable building, one that provides meeting space, study space, space for learning, enrichment and creativity for the community. There's a need for improved technology and training on how to use it, in addition to the great programs that we already have. At this point in time, it's time that we reach out. We've done a lot of facility assessments. We've done them for years, and we know the shortcomings of some of the space for use in the library. I think it's now time, we think it's now time, that we do needs assessment for the community. So we reach out to different groups, different civic organizations who might have needs for meeting room space, technology, assistance, programming, things like that. So at this stage, we're going to probably bring in like an objective consultant who can help us gather certain focus groups, user groups and things like that, and take a look at what the community needs, and then align what the building needs are and the facility needs are with the community needs. It's just a step on the path toward improving services for the community. We're looking ahead to possible state grants in the future, and this will help us get our ducks in a row to be ready for those state grant rounds. Does that answer your question?
Yep.
Good?
Well, thank you, thank you, Jane. As you can tell, Jane really cares about not only the library, but the fact that libraries aren't what they used to be. So the future is very different. Next question?
Susan Starkey from Precinct One. Yarmouth is one of the communities that I'm proud to be part of because it's a green community, and I don't know who the staff person is that's managing that these days, but I'd love to know if things like Item 9 of replacing a Ford Explorer, 19, Transit Connect work van, 20, a department vehicle replacement of a Crown Victoria, if any of those or others are using some of the Green Communities funds to get an EV, an electric vehicle, instead of just replacing it with a gas guzzling, if you don't mind me saying so, car or vehicle. And it's a great time for us to make sure that any replacement that we have is a more efficient and less fossil fuel using. So I don't know who the staff person is on that, but it would be great to hear from them about what we're doing with those Green Community funds and if they're employed in this budget.
Thank you. Mr. Rittenhour, can you answer that question?
Yes, certainly. What I'd like to do is bring up Mr. Kyle Pettisini, who is the Town's Economic Development Coordinator and Green Communities Coordinator, and there's been a lot of exciting action in that regard, and so I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Pettisini.
Yes, I am Kyle Pettisini, the Green Communities Coordinator. Thank you for the question. One, we actually just submitted our Green Communities Competitive Grant application to the state. So we applied for funding for the six police cruisers in Article 13. So we can get, we applied for $5,000 per vehicle for those. And then we also applied for funding for the anaerobic digester project at 50 Workshop Road.
Fantastic, fantastic. And then I wondered if Jeff could tell us more about the roadway improvements, Number 46. That's a big part of this budget, and it would help to have more insight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Colby?
Yes, this is a continuation of a yearly amount that we invest within the roadway network. The vast majority is through a surface treatment of roads. It dates back to a 2013 override that this community approved, and each year it grows at approximately 2.5%. So that's what this year's allotment would be to preserve the road network that we have.
And next question?
Lizargo, Precinct Two. What is the process on this? So if an amount, if there's a feeling from somebody in the audience that the amount is more than it should be on one item, we would then not vote for the entire group? Is that correct?
You can, you can make a motion, make a motion to change.
Make a motion to amend one of the appropriations? Is that what you would do?
Yep.
All right. I make a motion to amend the amount for the library feasibility study to lower it to $35,000.
Could you have, could you put that in writing?
I don't have a second.
Is there a, yeah, that's a good question. Is there a second to that motion? The motion was, in case you didn't hear, was to reduce the Item 40 in the capital expense to, from $50,000 to $35,000. Is there a second? Okay, we have a second?
Mr. Moderator?
Yep.
I'd like to address the amendment, Robert Rittenhour, Town Administrator. I think it may be a little short-sighted to take the feasibility study that's associated with these multimillion-dollar facilities that have such a large impact on our town services, such as the town libraries, and short-circuit the community outreach and the consensus building and planning that we need to determine what the next generation in our community is going to see as library resources. The entire library industry in the last 20 years or so has completely transformed. It's no longer just a warehouse for books or where people come to read periodicals. It's a center for community gathering and programs. We have two very beautiful and historic libraries in our community now, although they haven't been renovated to today's modern standards, and there's deficiencies throughout each one of these buildings that the library department could, could spend hours inventorying for you. In addition, the location of these libraries is in the middle of some of our most sensitive historic villages along the Route 28 corridor. And there are significant questions as to whether or not we're going to be able to both identify and meet that full program of services in their current locations, or will it be required to move the facilities to a different location so that we can meet those needs? And if that's the case, the facilities that are located in, in those sensitive villages, they can't be just abandoned. There's an entire process, you know, that involves community development consensus in terms of, you know, the future of those areas. There's just so much at stake, and it seems like a simple thing, but it's actually a complex question that requires some significant community outreach, planning, bringing folks together. And my personal fear is that if we cut the feasibility study and we cut the community outreach and we cut the planning, what are we going to end up at the end of the day for the library facilities? So while I certainly appreciate the desire to try to economize and save money, on this particular item, we're sort of on the tip of the iceberg of some massive facilities and massive decisions. One of the biggest facility decisions that we have facing the town next to the wastewater, but we've got other things to focus on like libraries. And so I'd like to recommend at this time that you keep these funds here and let this planning occur and participate in the process, and that maybe together at a future town meeting, we can address those needs and to do it in a way that brings the community together. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess it's a little out of normalcy, but based on those comments, and I take no position here, obviously, but before we get into heavy discussion based on maybe an enlightenment area, I will give the mover of the motion an opportunity, no pretensions here, to withdraw the motion if...
Moderator?
Yep.
I find that inappropriate for you to do that without comment from anybody else in the audience.
We will do that. I just said, it came out a little out of, I agree with you. It was a little bit different because the Town Administrator made some comments that...
Doesn't matter, sir. We all have a right to have a comment before you ask somebody else to the microphone.
Lizargo, Precinct Two, and I would respond to Mr. Rittenhour, and I think he's spoken quite well. I don't want to eliminate the amount for the feasibility study, but I think that it's a little high, and I would note that there are other appropriations that are going to the library department in this. So there are repairs and et cetera, and I think that the, if there were, and I know once again, getting volunteers for anything, but a committee to bring forward volunteers from the town to work on the very questions that Mr. Rittenhour raises would be quite appropriate, and maybe we wouldn't have to spend a full 50. It could be reduced to 35.
Thank you. So the amendment is the motion to reduce the amount of $50,000 to $35,000 for the library feasibility study. Now your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jim Saban, Yarmouthport. I'm not representing any boards or committees in which I serve on, which are many. I once served on the Capital Budget Committee, and I must point out that many of these items are not capital expenditures. Feasibility studies are not capital expenditures. I don't know what the OPBE trust fund is, but I'm sure it's not buying a pickup truck. We are mixing monies here. Capital expenditures are not feasibility studies. So I would support the motion. Actually, my motion would be to eliminate all of these feasibility studies because it's inappropriate to put these dollars under capital.
You're speaking to the amendment, which I think you said you support the amendment. Anybody else? We do? Yes, sir.
Mark Fallon, Precinct Three. As a professional consultant who would not be bidding on this project, $50,000 is actually very low. To get a professional to run a very well-thought-out, well-written, data-driven information gathering for a town the size of Yarmouth would probably be somewhere between $75,000 to $100,000. So $50,000 would require the use of volunteers, would require the use of town committees just to keep it at $50,000. I recommend that we vote against the amendment.
Over here?
My name is Duncan Oliver. Oh, am I?
I went over there. You'll be next, you'll be second.
Okay. Cynthia Butler, District Eight. So my question is about the OPEB trust...
No, you have to speak to this amendment. The amendment is for the library feasibility study.
Just for the library?
Yes.
Okay.
Will Rubenstein, Precinct One. I understand the point of wanting to be efficient with our dollars, and the nice lady who brought up this amendment asked about if there was a way for volunteers to be involved, and I have fantastic news. I'm a member of the Library Planning Committee of the Town of Yarmouth. So if you want to be involved and you want to help the town save money in whatever form, whether it's through this amendment or otherwise, I would encourage you to please reach out to Jane Kane and to all the other hard-working folks who are trying to reconsider the future of library services in our beautiful town. And respectfully, I ask that you vote against this amendment. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name is Duncan Oliver. I'm from Precinct One, and I'd like to first correct our Town Administrator politely by telling him that there are three public libraries in the Town of Yarmouth, two south of Route 28, which are supported by town funds, and one on Route 6A, which is totally privately supported by funds raised by the people there. And my question is, will this feasibility study, since they use our library's figures, will they be included, or is this only for the two libraries that are south of Route 28? We spend nearly $200,000 a year to, on our own, to maintain the Yarmouthport Library, and that's a building that is historic as well.
Can someone answer that question? Does the feasibility study include Yarmouthport?
This feasibility study is intended not for the private-operated library in Yarmouthport. It's for the public-operated libraries. There would be a different study for the, for the Yarmouthport.
Does that mean then that the town does not want to use our figures, circulation and all of the other things?
No, that does not. You referenced, you referenced, does this feasibility study go towards funding improvements to the Yarmouthport... to the Yarmouth Port Library? At this time, this study is planned for the two that are town-funded.
The reason that I bring this up is because you have pictures of three libraries in the handouts that you gave us as we came in, one of which is the Yarmouth Port Library.
May I speak, Mr. Moderator?
Yeah, go ahead, Jane.
Hi Duncan, it's Jane Kane. I just wanted to explain that the study will include all the residents' input because we circulate to everybody in Yarmouth, just like your library does. So it's community input from all residents. Does that answer your question?
Okay. Question? Ma'am?
Hi, my name's Angela Carbone. I live in Precinct Six, and I'm on the library board. And I think the point is that the public library serves everybody. Anyone can go into the public library and use the facilities, the technology, get a library card, and I don't think that's quite true of the Yarmouth Port private library because I tried to get a library card there when I first moved to town, and I was told I couldn't. So, but that's irrelevant. The point is, where did this person who is making this amendment come up with thirty-five thousand dollars? Because I'm very impressed with the gentleman who said he does consulting work and fifty thousand is really low.
Well, okay. Can you answer the thirty-five thousand dollar question?
Yes, that's based on my experience as a professional, not in doing library feasibility studies, but energy feasibility studies. And if it's appropriate, I would say, can we call the question?
Call the question? Take one more comment. I'll take one more. Go ahead.
Mary Anne Agresti, Precinct Seven. I think a lot of these are just based on the fact that the scope of the proposed professional services is really not very clear. I'm an architect. I do feasibility studies for libraries, and I know that the range of services can range significantly. It was based on the librarian's presentation. I agreed that I thought that this fee was high, based on what I would charge for that. But based on the follow-up presentation that actually addressed huge site planning issues for the town, it's not. So do we have a real proposal for scope of services from a professional that defines the scope of work? Because otherwise, it's a difficult question to answer.
Okay. We have a, we have, the question's been called. We're going to take a vote on the amendment. The amendment is to amend...
Didn't have to do it.
Item forty under the capital budget plan from fifty thousand to thirty-five thousand. All in favor of the amendment which would reduce the amount...
You have to vote on the question.
Question?
You have to vote on the question, whether it should end it, because there were some misstatements.
I thought there was a, someone called the question, and I am calling the questions. Take a vote on the amendment.
Let me do it. Okay. Dorcas McGurran, Precinct Five. I called the question. There you go. Now it's called.
All in favor calling the question? All opposed? Vote carries to call the question. The amendment, the amendment is to reduce the amount to fifty, to thirty-five thousand dollars. All in favor of the amendment which would reduce the amount, say aye. All opposed? The amendment fails. We're back to, any questions on the overall capital budget? Yes, sir.
Again, Jim Saban. Before I go any further, Mr. Moderator, I think it's important that we also recognize Pat Armstrong, who has also retired from the community this year, as our recreation director for so many years.
We'll never... Thank you very much for that. Pat was integral to this town, still is.
So, Mr. Moderator, if I can go back to what I talked about with the original motion, OPEB, it's my understanding that is for other benefits? Again, why are we putting these items in capital? Can somebody explain where we've changed the def... I know we're changing the definitions of words in this world every single day, and things that we thought meant things don't mean it anymore. So is it that capital budget, our capital doesn't mean the same thing anymore? Am I missing something? Because these are not capital expenditures.
I'll defer to either Mr. Rittenhour or Mr. Centio.
Yes, I can answer that question. As in previous town meetings, this article is not only for capital, it's for the appropriation to the capital budget as recommended by the capital committee, as well as other general uses of free cash, which include some items that are not capital. And included there, where it says the OPEB, just for a word of explanation on that, that is the town's minimum required contribution for what are termed other post-employment benefits, which are future health insurance, unfunded liability for retired workers. So there are some items in there that aren't capital, and they go along with the capital budget because it's the same use of funds.
Over here. Ma'am?
Lisa McNeil, Precinct One. I had a question on item forty-one, the cable television expenses. Could someone talk about what that is?
I can answer that question. It's another example of one of the items that are funded from free cash, but not a capital item. And these are the funds that go towards meeting the governmental cable channel operations for the remainder of the fiscal year. And if you will recall, this is just a stopgap measure to take us through the end of the year, after which all of the cable revenues, as a result of the vote that we took at the last town meeting, are being reserved in a special account that will pay for all of the public and educational cable operations. And what item forty-one does is it continues the operation of the government channel until that time that those funds kick in.
So these are, this is the town meeting and the selectmen and all the other committee meetings that go on, on the Channel eighteen?
Correct. These cameras you see here today, all of the sound, the production, the meetings that are televised, the whole public outreach piece. We have to continue to fund it through free cash until our fund kicks in, and it has been covered by free cash in the past, but that is something that at the end of this fiscal year, we're going to be discontinuing that, and we're going to have special votes from our reserved capital, I mean, cable fund that's being created to fund future expenses.
Okay. It seems relatively high. Is this an additional amount that we haven't had in the past?
No, this is a continuing of our current operations, just as they are now, without any real expansion. But in the future, you know, we do hope very much to improve the public outreach and all of the cable programming through a new program, but this is just to keep the current operations rolling until our new fund starts, which will start July one.
Thank you. Sullivan?
Hi, Tom Sullivan, Precinct One. Back to Article number forty-five, the OPEB trust fund. It's a lot of money, five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Is this to cover shortfalls that the town was not paying due to pensions or health insurance in the past? That is to make it up for the shortfalls? I know that there's been a deficit statewide in these type of funds, so I was just wondering if this is exactly what we're doing here. It's a lot of money for that fund.
Yes, sir, it absolutely is, and that's an excellent question. I'm glad that you brought that up. There are two significant unfunded liabilities, and Ed Centio is far more versed than I am on those, but just generally, and I invite him up to have any additional follow-up. There's an unfunded liability in the state retirement system, and the portion of it that we belong to is the Barnstable County retirement system, and that is covered by its own separate statute. There's a funding formula, and there's a retirement schedule for that unfunded liability for the future cost of actual retirement benefits for current workers. And that unfunded liability is carried in the retirement appropriation that's contained in the town budget, and there's a schedule to retire that and bring it down to zero. Now similarly, and this impacts communities across the Commonwealth, in fact, throughout the United States, there is a second unfunded liability that local communities face, and this is the unfunded liability for health insurance for those same current workers, based on an actuarial analysis for how long they'll live and what their future health insurance costs will be. And the town has an unfunded liability through an actuarial analysis. There's a retirement schedule, and there are contributions that the town is set to make in order to protect ourselves in the future, protect our bond rate. Each year, we have a minimum required contribution towards those future costs. Now, make no mistake, the town has not shorted any payments to current retirees for health insurance, but this is for the unfunded liability that's created for the future lifetime health insurance costs for current workers after they retire. And so this amount here goes into, we have established the other post-employee benefit, OPEB. There's a trust fund that these minimum payments go into each year, and that prevents us from having in the future excessively growing costs for health insurance for retired employees.
Thank you. One more question? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Joe Goldstein. I'm in Precinct Six. I've been a member of the Capital Budget Committee and the Finance Committee. We have, unless it changed last year, we have always dealt with capital as capital and free cash as free cash. We seem to have made a decision to combine the two. I'm not sure why, but I'd like an explanation why we're not dealing with each individual issue as an allocation of funds. Thank you.
I'll defer to Mr. Rittenhour. I think he's sort of answered that, but I'll see if he wants to expand a little bit.
Well, this was the same format that was used last year, and it could be two articles. Maybe in the future, we'll do it in two articles. It's getting to be quite a long list here, but I think it's important that each one is listed out separately. They are all from the free cash, with the exception, the roadway improvements has a substantial reason appropriate that's under the town's levy, and, but there's no structural reason that they have to be included in the same article. It could be one or two.
Do you have a question?
Yes, I do. Robert Zavara, Precinct Six. I heard earlier that we said that we had a balanced budget, and I understand that, but I want to get a little bit more detail on what's happening within this article. Roadway was a two-and-a-half override, which means in theory it should be in our budget forever. That's what we voted. Now we're using free cash to pay something that we voted a long time ago that should be in our budget forever. We also have, we used to have a capital budget, one point five million dollars, in our operating account that we used to spend. So technically, we're using three million dollars or so of free cash money to pay for things that used to be in our operating budgets. So we have a balanced budget, but we have a balanced budget that doesn't have all the same services in it. So that's just a clarification. Is there an intent to try to get both those line items back into the operating budget, and how do you plan on doing it?
I can defer to Mr. Rittenhour.
No, that's a, that's a great question, and I very much appreciate it. And in fact, and I think it should be clear, so much information that flies around, you have to be accurate. One of the hardest things we worked on with the budget this year, and again, to recap what was just said, during the pandemic period, apparently a couple of years ago, there was an override in two thousand and thirteen for roadway maintenance, and as the pandemic impacted town revenues, those items were placed under free cash. But I'm here to report this evening that one key initiative in this budget, of which we are extraordinarily proud, all of the town leaders, is that the full amount of the two thousand and thirteen debt, Proposition Two-and-a-half override for roadway maintenance of one point one million dollars is in this article transferred back into the operating budget where it belongs, where it should be, and is not coming from free cash. And if you take a look in Article twelve, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one million, one hundred thousand, and to transfer the remaining balance from free cash. So the roadway maintenance, one point one million dollar override, has been restored to the operating budget, and will continue to try to build back into the operating budget. We have many other services that had been temporarily funded from free cash have been brought back into the operating budget. So we've made, I think, tremendous progress there, and the capital committee was instrumental in assisting with this, so also our finance department, and everyone worked hard on it. And so I think that's one of our major centerpieces of this year's budget, that, you know, we're putting things back together the way they need to be to move us forward sustainably.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody who had comments or questions. Every single one of them, I think, enlightened all of us, but now it's time to vote. So we'll take a vote on Article twelve. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you. Article thirteen, presented by Selectman Mike Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move Article thirteen as printed in the warrants.
We have a second. Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends by a vote of five to zero. It's published differently in the article, but that's the actual vote. It's unanimous vote.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends four to zero.
Explanation?
The Yarmouth Police Department would like to enter a four-year finance agreement with Ford Motor Company for the purchase of six police cruisers. The agreement will allow the department to replace multiple aging vehicles with minimal impact to capital budget fund. This will reduce costly repairs to several aging vehicles used daily for patrol and administrative functions. All the vehicles scheduled for replacement are no longer under warranty.
Okay. Thank you. Questions? Comments? Yes, ma'am?
Vida Morris, Precinct One. Did I understand correctly that all of these replacement vehicles will be electric? In this, in this batch, anyway?
Chief? Deputy Chief Lennon?
The vehicles will, they will not be electric. They'll be, they'll be gas, electric hybrids. So the vehicles we're looking to get from Ford, we see the savings when the vehicle's idling, we'll then switch over to a battery pack, so we'll save fuel consumption when it's idling, but it's going to be a gas-powered and electric-powered vehicle. They're not strictly electric vehicles.
Do they have the batteries that the all-electric ones have, or do they have some other kind of...
I don't know what type of batteries in the vehicle may have.
So also, in the future, this will be the kind of vehicles that you will purchase? There will be a decision made at the time that they need, the older ones need to be replaced? replaced?
This is the vehicle that Ford is now producing for us in a pursuit package, so we can only get hybrid SUVs. So yes, this is a vehicle we're going to be purchasing in the future if we stay with Ford.
Okay, so we're not going strictly electric, in other words, because apparently to dispose of those batteries is probably more problematical and more, it provides, I mean, it requires more lethal kind of disposal procedures than the nuclear waste does. And I'm so glad to hear that it isn't all-electric. And besides, the people who keep proposing these clean and green projects do not take into account that none other than Elon Musk said about 15 months ago, there's no way that those vehicles would be, or those batteries would be able to be run on solar or wind power at all. And they better also start thinking about the disposal of those things. I'm glad to hear what you have, what you have.
Thank you. Another question? Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, Tom Sullivan, Precinct 1, for the Deputy Chief. The lease figures you have here, that $88,008.21 a year?
Yes.
Is that put in a contract already? The reason why, I'll just explain. The reason why I'm asking is, the present car sales today, whether gas or hybrid, they're selling at retail prices today, $1,000 above retail right now on the market. So I'm wondering if these figures could be low. I mean, the way the economy's going, it's not going to slow down. These prices are going way up, so I'm just wondering if these are locked in or not.
It's a quote that we got from Ford a couple of months ago. So our cars, they run about $54,000 per vehicle when we get them. There is a trade-in value that we get for some of our other cruisers that will offset the cost.
Okay.
But the way we're looking at this is, as it was in the explanation, we can come to the Capital Budget Committee with a less of an investment or a, per year for the vehicle. So if we space it out for four years, we can get six cruisers instead of coming in for, you know, a big ask of about $400,000.
But if the prices still go up, you'll have to come back to the town to get more money, correct? The town manager or a town meeting? That's a question for the town.
Yeah, I think that's correct. The question is, if the price goes up, do we have to come back?
We will return for the annual appropriation. So we're approving the chief getting the cars with a four-year payment schedule.
Okay.
And we put the contract in that protects those costs, but we have to come back each year to get the annual payment, and it's subject to appropriation.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Hearing no more, no more questions. No further questions? I don't think. This vote requires a two-thirds majority. Article 13, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The article carries by a two-thirds majority. Thank you. Article 14, Selectman Stone.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. I move Article 14 as printed in the warrant.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends?
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends four, zero.
Okay. Explanation?
Mr. Moderator, passage of this article would reduce costly repairs as this aging 13-year-old vehicle used daily to move municipal solid waste and recycling material is at the end of its useful life. The vehicle to be replaced has over 300,000 miles, and among other issues, there's difficulty starting, it might need a new starter, the regen system is malfunctioning, there are antifreeze leaks from unknown origins, the repair costs are unknown unless the system is pulled apart. The balance of the recycling fund is $398,361, which would pay for this replacement vehicle.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Article 15, Transfer Station Capital Expense, Selectman Stone.
Thank you again, Mr. Moderator. I move Article 15 as printed in the warrant.
Select Board?
Select Board recommends by a five-to-zero vote.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends four, zero.
Explanation?
This safety and efficiency improvement eliminates foot traffic around moving vehicles as drivers now go upstairs to receive tickets after dumping. This will also help expediting outgoing vehicles to improve truck traffic in and out of the station. The funds to be used have been deposited quarterly by the transfer station contractor, Covanta. Since the beginning of the lease period, the anticipated cost of the improvement is equivalent amount as cited in the article.
Do you have any comments or questions? Take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. The motion carries. Article 16, Recreation Revolving Fund, again, Selectman Stone.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 16 as printed in the warrant.
Select Board?
Select Board recommends by a unanimous vote.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends by a unanimous vote, four to zero.
Explanation?
This article allows the town to establish a revolving fund for the purpose of carrying out recreational and parks programs into which the receipts received for recreational programs will be deposited and used to carry out self-supporting recreational and parks programs as provided in the authorizing statute, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53D.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none? Take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Article 17, Collective Bargaining, also, select person, Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move Article 17 as printed in the warrant.
Select Board?
Select Board recommends by a five-to-zero vote.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends four to zero.
Explanation?
This article provides funding for settled or to be settled collective bargaining agreements. The town strives to settle contracts that are fair to the employees and allows the town to stay within the constraints of Proposition 2 and 1/2.
We will take a questions or comments? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Article 18, Wastewater Infrastructure Stabilization Fund, Selectman Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move Article 18 as printed in the warrant.
Select Board?
Select Board unanimously recommends?
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee unanimously recommends four to zero.
Explanation?
The Municipal Modernization Act of 2016 allows a town which accepts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 5B, to dedicate not less than 25% of a particular fee, charge, or other receipt to any stabilization fund. This would include any new revenue generated from short-term rentals, which the town has identified as a critical source for funding the implementation of its wastewater management plan. The town must accept Paragraph 4 of Section 5B at town meeting, establish the stabilization fund, and designate the percentage of the short-term rental excise, but not less than 25%, to be deposited into the stabilization fund. No further appropriation into the fund is required to dedicate these funds. As with any appropriation from a stabilization fund, a two-thirds vote is required by town meeting. Once the town accepts the statute, the town can revoke its acceptance for at least three fiscal years. This article creates a special-purpose stabilization fund for wastewater management and directs 75% of receipts to this fund to offset the cost of the wastewater enterprise.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Hearing none? All in favor of Article 18, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We needed two-thirds of a vote. It was passed by two-thirds. Thanks. Article 19, be presented by Selectman Peter Smith.
I move Article 19 as printed in the warrant and to authorize the selectmen to accept non-sustentative amendments to the special act as may be required by the legislature.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommends five, zero.
Finance Committee?
Recommends four, zero.
Explanation?
Since the creation of the Tourism Revenue Protection Fund in 2006, the legislature has adopted a new excise tax for short-term rental properties, in addition to the hotel-motel tax which the tourism fund was originally based. Through this article, the town seeks to reserve the short-term rental taxes to fund wastewater development without impacting residential taxpayers while retaining the original intent and scope of the tourism fund. The changes to the tourism fund allocation will take effect once the legislation is approved and likely for fiscal year 2024.
Before we go, did we, the motion was made. Did I hear a second? Okay, there was a second. Okay. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Article 20, again, presented by Selectman Smith.
I move the Article 20 as printed in the warrant.
Second. Board of, Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends, excuse me, five to zero.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends four to zero.
Explanation?
The Tourism Revenue Preservation Fund established by special legislation draws upon rooms and meals tax receipts. The funding is overseen by the Community and Economic Development Committee and is used to stimulate the local tourism economy through physical improvements, marketing, and special projects.
Questions, comments? Hearing none? Take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Article 21, District Improvement Financing, Phase 1, to be presented by Selectman Smith.
I move Article 21 as printed in the warrant.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends five to zero.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends four to zero.
Explanation?
Moderator, waive the reading of the explanation as it's quite lengthy, and turn this over to Mr. Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Scott, Assistant Town Administrator. I'm going to go through a quick presentation that is related to all the meetings we've had with various organizations, and some of the FAQs or frequently asked questions that came up as a result of those meetings. So what is a DIF or District Improvement Financing? The purpose of a DIF is to establish a dedicated revenue stream from which new growth can support infrastructure investments. So as new growth occurs, a piece of that new growth is dedicated toward the payments for infrastructure improvements. Is a DIF a tax break? Some of you may have heard about a TIF, Tax Revenue Financing. This is not a TIF. This is District Improvement Financing, and it is not a tax break. The DIF does not reduce the amount of existing or future taxes paid by the property owners. They still pay those taxes even with the new growth. What it does is allocates a percentage of the new growth to the DIF program. We are not asking for approval to the DIF program this evening. We'll do that at the next town meeting. Is there an impact to the property owner in the district? There is, to the extent it's positive, because what the DIF does is it allows us to take a piece of that new growth and not impact directly the property owners in the DIF district or outside the DIF district, for that matter. So more DIF means less betterment. So we're positioning the DIF, as I'll show you in the future part of the presentation, so it is before the assessments that may come in the future that are related to wastewater. Is there any special requirement to the property owner in the DIF? No. You pay your taxes. There is no special paperwork or anything else. You won't even recognize, if you're in a DIF district, whether or not you're in it in the future. We will develop formulas for the 2003 town meeting that will allocate a piece of that new growth for wastewater. Does a DIF reduce the amount of tax revenue received by the town? No. When a DIF is created, the total assessed value in the, in the district is basically set at a certain level. So everything that exists in the district at this time still gets taxed and still goes to the levy. So new taxes from private investment, however, would be allocated at your next town meeting based on formulas. What we're doing here is just establishing the districts in the certain areas to determine what that base value is. The DIF approach has three advantages over borrowing that some of the questions that people have asked, why don't we just have the revenue go to the general fund and then borrow? Borrowing is not included in the city debt limits because you have a definitive revenue stream. The borrowing does not require new taxation. And because the DIF is in a certain district, it allocates or pulls out some of that new revenue related to that area and not town-wide. If you were to take growth from the entire town, then you're taking it from, you know, the entire town, not necessarily from the area where the work will be done. So this is how it works. It's really a cycle of investment, and this is the more simplified version. If you have the brochure, there's a more, more steps in this. So wastewater is a leverage for economic investment. That is, businesses and companies that have been waiting for wastewater or can't really make a major investment because wastewater is constraining them in terms of the costs associated, or the on-site septic is constraining them because of the cost of their improvement, wastewater investment will help private investment. And so you go from one, number one, to two. That private investment creates new growth, and that new growth is, simply put, it is the building permit or the new growth associated with new construction or improvements and things like that. It is not market-rate new growth. So if the market pushes the values up, we don't capture that in a DIF. Then revenue from the new growth facilitates wastewater. So you can see that cyclical approach in this, in the sense that wastewater creates a potential for new growth, new growth or private investment creates the opportunity to fund wastewater. Now, on the bottom, there's a bar down there with an arrow below it. Our goal is really to start from the left and try to get grants, DIF, the funding sources I'll show you later, betterments and user fees. So if you start on the left, those are the least impactful to property owners. Moving to the right, most impactful. So by lining up all these other funding sources before we start calculating betterments and user fees, we're trying to sort of comprise our financing system off a less of an impact. One of the things that's come up during the discussion is really the tax levy. And a lot of people brought up in some of the various meetings that 2002, there was a very positive tax levy, and that is the division or where you fund the levy from in terms of land uses. So residential was 85%, commercial was 11.37%, and that was 2002. So that was, you know, 20 years ago. But today, the tax levy is more burdened toward residential in terms of the mix of land uses and the mix of those values is going more toward commercial. So beyond the issue of funding wastewater, by broadening the tax base and bringing in commercial, you have the opportunity to reduce the burden at 91.27% on residential. So what are we approving at this stage? Establish the properties that will be the basis for the revenue from the new growth and where the funds will be spent. And those are divided up into two different types of districts. And the DIF statute divides them into invested revenue district, where you collect the money, and then development district, where the funds are spent on the infrastructure. So the reason why the state does that is, let's say you have a downtown, but the downtown doesn't have a sewer plant, but they need an expansion at the plant, and it's in a different area. And the expansion of the plant will stimulate new growth. So the downtown will be the development district or the invested revenue district, essentially, where you're collecting the money from to then be the development district, where you're going to spend the money on the sewer treatment plant. So in this case, we are using So in this case, we are using both. And next year, at town meeting, we're going to introduce the development program. When we have more cost estimates associated with the treatment plant and the circulation of the collection system, that's when we will come with a development program to identify how much money we might pull out of new growth. So here's the map and that map pretty much follows, and I apologize, it's not quite visible, but that singular spine of green is Route 28. It follows the Phase One Sewer Project. And there are other sections of the map in terms of going up to Buck Island Road, that large lavender area is where the treatment plant would be located. So green is invested revenue district and development district. They can occur in the same place. And the reason for that is you're collecting and then you're spending money and you want to cover all these areas because A, this is a commercial area, so there's potential for growth, and then B, you want to be able to spend or development district on the sewer line. So a lot of staff spend a lot of time finding every, you know, aspect of the sewer plant in terms of pumping stations and, you know, sewer lines to make sure we covered the entire area. Lavender is just development district. We've believed that given those areas, they were predominantly residential, they just had a sewer line, and then there's a treatment plant, you're not going to collect any revenue there. So it is where you will spend the money. So green is where you collect and spend, lavender is where you just spend the funds. So to the left of your screen is several different funding sources that have been articulated in prior reports. 2019, there was a financing plan that was developed for wastewater. And then to the right are the more impactful to property owners, betterments and user rates for capital. So we position the DIF, as you saw in that bar and the prior slide, in between those two, so that as we determine what growth we would be able to capture from the district, we could increase or decrease the percentage to capture to reduce the impacts on the right. So you combine some of those funding sources with the DIF and you're basically trying to as much as possible reduce the impacts on the property owners. So if anybody has any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Do we have a question?
I've got a couple, Mr. Moderator, for the town. Can you go back to the map for a second?
Sure.
That's question number one. It's just basically two questions, but the second one might be lengthy. The first, it's all in yellow here as far as I can see, unless I'm colorblind, but that yellow following Route 28, that's every business from Bass River to the Highness Town Line?
Correct.
That is going to be the DIF?
Yes.
Okay. It was an easy one. The second one, where I'm concerned about this, is dealing with the tax levy. Now, the way, I'll explain this hopefully for everyone to understand, and the town manager or town administrator can straighten me out. He, every year, takes the present tax levy and adds up two and a half percent for the new year coming on the present tax levy we use. On top of that is new growth. New growth is two parts. One is new buildings, which was kind of explained here a little bit. And the other one is assessment on our properties. That includes commercial properties and residential. My concern is this, when you're taking the new growth out of the commercials, all of Route 28, which could be a lot of money, and that's taken out of the new growth when you're putting the town levy together, could that create a deficit? And could that deficit in the term down the road be passed on to the residential taxpayers? Because you're taking money from the tax levy that's a combination of the two and a half increase plus the new growth. So when you take this money out of the commercial, you're taking it out totally from the tax levy. So is there going to be a deficit there or could there be a deficit in the budget coming up in the future? Or will we face a two and a half override to make up that deficit? Now, this is my question. Made it short and sweet.
Thank you. If I may, the base values that exist as of this meeting would remain. You continue to collect taxes on those base values. Any market increases unrelated to new growth in terms of market, not new growth in terms of work on the, on the property, would continue to go to levy. You don't collect market increases and things like that on a DIF. You collect basically what you believe or what actually happens for improvements. And there is a brochure that was at the door, what about Proposition Two and a Half? Using the DIF does not affect the calculation for Proposition Two and a Half and will not prevent a municipality from complying. DIF relies on new growth, which increases the levy limit. It does not require tax increases. So we are capturing that sort of cyclical opportunity where wastewater creates growth that does not exist now or would not exist without wastewater and then we're putting it back into the wastewater program. So the key to this is, is there's a clause in this and other economic financing tools is they say if not for. If not for the DIF and not for the funding and not for the wastewater, you wouldn't have the growth. If you look at the relationship of these two issues, there is a chart that we have that shows pretty much that commercial growth is declining. It's obvious in these two charts and almost flatlined. And where other communities may have seen a blip here and there where they've seen commercial growth go up as a result of economic factors, we believe wastewater is sort of flatlining that. So as a result, you wouldn't have growth if you wouldn't have wastewater. So the DIF is stimulating that. So two and a half isn't affected by this and some of this, most of the material in the brochure comes from the state website. We're only capturing the new growth associated with the actual buildings. Any market increases and things like that continue to go to levy. Any taxes that we're collecting now continue to go to levy.
Just with a follow-up. My concern is, we're in a period right now, we all know this, that property values have gone through the roof. That's coming to probably going to slow down. Because the latest figures come out of Bounce County yesterday, where sale prices of homes have dropped because of interest rates have gone up and they're going up probably next month even more. So that will have a further impact on business growth and on residential sales. So the economy is coming down a little bit. And I was listening this afternoon, they're now calling it slow inflation. So my concern is in the future with this, will this be effective with the town? I mean, you're looking, I'm hoping you're looking to expand the commercial district. I would support that. But if the, if it needs not there, then can you adjust the assessment on commercials versus, so we don't face a tax increase residential?
No. This doesn't affect the assessment per se. All it does is extricate some of that new growth associated with that sort of wastewater stimulus to then go back to pay for that. So that's the cycle. You can adjust in any town meeting the percentage that you take away. So most of the time, I've done two of these and we were very conservative about our percentages. We could have collected more, but we were very conservative on what percent. You don't have to take the 100 percent of the growth. In some cases, what you would do is a graduated percentage. You have two options, where you do a straight line percentage and near the end of those years, as you go 20 years out, your revenue is increasing. Or you can graduate that so that as you're collecting enough money to pay a portion of the bond, you reduce the percentage annually. So what we're going to do between now and the next town meeting is do an in-depth economic analysis. We've already begun talking to property owners about what their growth potential is and a lot of them are mentioning, you know, I'd like to grow, but I have a choice between a hotel and a restaurant. I can't do both.
Okay.
And so, once we come back, we'll have a very detailed economic analysis and table.
Yeah, I'd be looking forward to see what your analysis is when you come back next, next year, next May?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any more questions?
Thanks. This is Marsha.
Precinct seven. I noticed there was a small paragraph in regards to your presentation paper that we all received about Proposition Two and a Half.
Right.
And in that was that the DIF relies on new growth, which increases the levy that you were just talking about with Tom. But my question is in a concern for the school budgets. That specific language is in and has been necessary many times, many years in the past to help fund the schools without overrides. And I'd like to know that your analysis will be that you've talked with the state, someone very good in the state about how they're doing really dual, if you're saying there isn't any in Two and a Half, that someone's at the state level has told you that it won't affect, that you can use that growth, you know, for the Two and a Half that people will be looking at for, for help with the school budgets. Because it's been affecting it in the past. Whether it does in the future, I don't know, but I hope that would be a consideration both for Cape Tech and the DY school system.
If I may, I can, the language in the brochure is straight from the state in terms of it doesn't affect Two and a Half. And again, we go back to the issue of the DIF leverages investment, which leverages wastewater, which leverages investment. So as a result, you haven't seen growth on that quarter, much of any growth. There's been some housing and other things. The growth you're going to see is going to be related to the wastewater and be related to the funding mechanisms that we put in place. So as a result, in the absence of the DIF and the absence of the wastewater, you wouldn't be seeing the new growth that would fund the schools. And all we're taking is that new growth, the new growth that wouldn't occur otherwise. So, and we can be very conservative, as I indicated, we'll be doing economic analysis and not taking all the growth. So the base value is established and what the document contains is, here's the values of all the properties and all those taxes will continue to go to the levy and be part of funding schools. Then beyond the base value, any market increase or any increase like that that's not related to actual construction and things like that, that will continue to go to the levy. So the last part, which is a new growth related to construction, a percentage of that will be taken by the DIF to fund the wastewater to then generate the growth. And so if we go back to that, you break out one of those issues. If the wastewater doesn't happen, you don't have the growth and the DIF doesn't collect the money to fund the wastewater. That's what you have now. I mean, you don't have a lot of growth on 28 because there are people making decisions between their hotel and their restaurant as to whether or not they're going to grow at all because wastewater is not present. So what this does is it stimulates the growth to give you more growth than you would have had if you did not have wastewater.
I think it's great that you're suggesting we're going to have growth through those mechanisms. All I'm suggesting is I hope it also counts for the budget for schools. And that it isn't just given to DIF because we've incorporated the laws of the state that allow us to do DIF, but that we also can still use that growth in, in
Yes, you can.
Providing the monies for the schools that they may need in the future. That's really, and somehow being assured to that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no further questions or comments, I think we're ready to vote on Article 21. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Article 22. Mr. Selectman Smith?
I move Article 22 as printed in the warrant.
We have a second. Select Board?
Select Board recommends four zero one.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends four to zero.
Explanation?
The Select Board, the Board of Selectmen in consultation with the Yarmouth Historical Commission understands that the current town seal contains culturally inaccurate Native American imaging that does not reflect the life of the Wapenoai people who have lived in the presence in Yarmouth for over 10,000 years. Flawed elements include a teepee, a headrest covering, and an oversized bow. The Board believes that these inaccuracies merit a community-wide conversation to determine how to best make corrections, has been done in several of the other Commonwealth communities. And Mr. Moderator, I respectfully request that George Slama, the Vice President of the Yarmouth Historical Commission, be allowed to speak on this matter.
That's approved. Mr. Slama?
Mr. Moderator, thank you. Good evening. I am George Slama, Precinct Three, and I am the Vice Chair of the Historical Commission. The Historical Commission researched the origins of the town seal, which provides some historical context as we consider Article 22. At the annual town meeting 130 years ago, on February 13th, 1892, the residents of Yarmouth authorized the Selectmen to procure a design of the town seal. At the February 12th, 1894 annual meeting, bylaws were adopted which included a description of the new town seal. An important component of the research included reaching out to members of the Wapenoag Tribe for their comments on the Native people's imagery on the seal. Ms. Paula Peters, tribal member and historian, and Mr. David Weeding, tribal council member and Mashpee Selectman and Chair of the Mashpee Town Committee spoke to the flawed elements on the seal, the teepee, the head covering, and an oversized bow. The approved town seal committee will evaluate whether a new seal should be created and if so, develop a new town seal for consideration. The committee will then conduct community outreach to solicit all points of view, inventory current uses of the town seal, and consider the logistics and budget impacts of establishing a new town seal. The committee will present their findings to the Select Board. Any changes will be considered at a subsequent town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Ms. Morris?
Vita Morris, Precinct One. Honestly, I cannot, I'm going to be discombobulated here because I have not seen such a flawed article being presented to, for consideration here. As I remember, the original presentation by somebody from the Historical Society was very factual, pretty much what was recapped right here right now. It's not something that the Native Americans approached us and demanded or even wanted to make any kind of corrections to the seal. And the, so I mean, it's, it seems to me it's mostly people who want to virtue signal to the rest of us or to whomever, you know, to just expend the kind of money that would be required to do this. And that's the main thing. I don't see any figures here. Do they have any, the proponents have any idea how much this thing would cost if you start fiddling around over the size of a bow and some teepee?
Let me interrupt, so you can speak to the article itself. And I can tell you, there is no funding listed in this, in this article, just to answer that question.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
I'm answering your question because I want to stick to the article wording.
Further on, towards the end of the article, it says, they're already making plans to apply for grants and/or other funding sources and everything. Well, to do that, you have to have some kind of a number to work with, how much this is going to cost, don't you think so? I mean, they're putting the cart before the horse here, just for openers.
Again, just so everybody understands, the article says to see if the town will vote to create a town seal review committee. You have very good questions. I'm trying to stick to what the article says. And those are questions that can and may or will be answered, but But I don't want to get off track here. That's what the article says, to see if the town will form a committee.
Well, there you go. You already are, no, why do we even have to do that? You have to go back to the very beginning. And when the first presentation was made, I think there was an attempt by some board members of the Selectmen to try and have that person make some kind of recommendation as to, you know, this is what the Native Americans want or this is very important and we need to proceed on this. The person didn't take the bait. He just presented the facts and told them to make up their own minds. I get the sense that the, somebody was pushing this thing from the back somewhere and continued its progress to what we are looking at right now. I mean, it's not exactly the same thing, but it's somewhat similar. What is it, Article 10, the wastewater, the sewage pipes on 6A? When they give you an amount that they're going to be working with and then say, we'll try to get grants and this kind of thing. I mean, this, this whole thing is upside down. I think they need to take it back and see if they can come up with a more, you know, intelligent presentation of this whole thing. And the other thing is, it'll be very interesting to see what they find, how much it would cost to fiddle around over these, what seem to be very minor things. Do you realize how many places in town have the seal all over it? Every time you turn around, there's a seal. And then you have stationery and business cards or whatever. This is going to be so far beyond anything that anybody's really
Your voice has been heard. Thank you very much, and your voice will continue to be heard. Other, other voices, yes?
That I strongly
Go ahead.
Sorry, too close?
No, you're fine now.
Oh, okay. I'd just like to say that I strongly support this article. And I'm very glad that the Yarmouth Historical Commission and that the Historical Society of Old Yarmouth have done a lot of research to discover actual life conditions and actual artifacts and bring them to our attention so that we'll know the life that went on here before any of us were born. It seems to me that we shouldn't rely on an image that has so many inaccuracies and that was designed in the 1890s at the time of the end of the frontier so that it was very much patterned on Western Indians from illustrations in books and from, God help us, Buffalo Bill shows. It's really important to have history matter, not just on Route 6A, not just on Old Main Street, but along, long pond, along the paths where the Wampanoags were. And I think we really want to show our appreciation for what came before, even if we're not being pressured by some, some cultural group to do so. It's, it's on us and we should care about history.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sullivan?
Tom Sullivan, Precinct One. I got a couple of questions on this. It says the town moderator will appoint the committee. I believe the town charter leads up the pointing of committees, not to the town moderator, but the Board of Selectmen.
No, the town charter, the town charter says that the town moderator shall appoint any special committee.
Yeah, then the question is, why do we need a special committee on this?
There's a special committee.
No, you're not answering the question. Because I got a question. Who approached the Historical Society to change this? And two, have they done any fiscal investigation on the cost of this? I mean, the seal might be changed, yeah. I agree the teepee is wrong. I did my research. It doesn't represent, it represents southwest America, but not locally. They lived on rounded type of homes filled with bark, grass, and everything to protect them from the winter. But have you actually looked at the possible cost of this? I mean, you want to raise, look at grants, you've got to have, come up with some money to apply for a grant, how much you're looking for. And I refer this, I would refer this to the Board of Selectmen. I really think it should be opened more because appointment on a selectman is a public meeting. Are you going to be holding public meetings, Mr. Moderator, on the appointments of this?
First of all, just to answer your question, I purposely avoided any communication on this issue until we see if it becomes
Okay.
a passed article. I'm neutral.
I understand you're neutral.
I can select the committee and then never get involved again, Mr. Moderator, if that'll happen. But that answers your question.
But how are the interviews going to be conducted? And where are they going to be conducted for people who file for this committee? It should be open and open.
We'll, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it.
Well, we get appointments in town now that are not subject to the open meeting law. So I don't know how you're going to do it.
If it requires the open meeting law, we'll have open meetings.
I think you should have an open meeting.
I appreciate your comment.
At the town hall, so everyone knows about the interview process.
Mr. Moderator?
Thank you.
If I may? Chris Vincent, Precinct Three. I think the purpose of this committee is to provide that very information that you're looking for. It's simply to get a committee together and then provide you that information, how much it's going to cost, all those details. This is just the creation of a committee.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Melanie Baron, Precinct One, and a member of the Yarmouth Historical Commission. I appreciate what was just said. I think it's really important for people to realize the questions that have been raised is exactly why we proposed that there be a committee to talk about this, to examine those questions and have time to look at the research that's been done that has many, many, many pages of it that actually were available on the warrant listing on the website of the town that people may want to look at. But I hope people hear, again, what it is that the article is saying. That we want to ask the town meeting to approve a process by which this conversation can be had. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing, hearing no more? Oh, yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, first of all, I support the article. But my question is one of, why do we need to discuss this at town meeting? Can't the Selectmen just make a committee like this? I mean, do we really need to tell you what to do? I think you know.
I will defer that to the Board of Selectmen.
I mean, can't we just have them?
I was not involved in this.
Can't they just create a committee? Or do we need to have town meeting give you permission?
No, you deserve an answer to your question, but I can't answer your question if it's directed to me.
Can I direct it to somebody who can answer it?
Sure. Anyone on the board?
Mr. Moderator? Mark Forrest, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. I think, and again, I would defer this to the Historical Commission. I think their recommendation is based on how other communities have done this. And in other communities, the recommendations ultimately went to town meeting. Mashpee has done that. Other towns like Natick and elsewhere have done that as well. That's the explanation that I received. And I think it's an appropriate one.
But you do have the authority regardless of this vote, am I correct? To create the committee? You don't need us to tell you to do it, correct?
No, again, that's the way the article is instructed. If you wanted to amend it or change it, you could certainly do that here at this time. But obviously, we're going to be interested in hearing what the Historical Commission
Right, but we vote this down, you can still do it. And I hope you do. But I'm just, that's my question is, why are we voting for something that you have the authority to do?
Okay, seeing no more, hearing no more questions, we're ready to take a vote. All in favor of Article 22, say aye. All opposed? The article passes. Article 23. Selectman Smith?
I move Article 23 as printed in the warrant.
We have a second. Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends five to zero.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends four to zero.
Explanation?
This article is a required housekeeping article that appears at every annual town meeting. As required under the Community Preservation Act, a minimum of 10% of CPA revenues must be set aside for each of the following purposes: community housing, historic preservation, and open space. Additionally, 5% of the total revenue is set aside for operating expenses. Fiscal year 23 CPA revenues are estimated to be 1.8 million and are based on an estimated property tax levy of 68 million. This figure includes an estimated 20% match of the 308,000, including supplemental match distributions made for the community that adopted the 3% surcharge.
Thank you. I also need the recommendation of the CPA committee. CPA approves. Questions, comments? Hearing none? Take a vote on Article 23. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The vote carries. Article 24, CPA Affordable Housing.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 24 as printed in the warrant.
We have a second. Select Board?
Recommends five to zero.
Finance Committee?
Recommends four to zero.
Explanation?
This article appropriates CPA funds to the Yarmouth Municipal Affordable Housing Trust created under General Laws Section 44, Section 55C to create, create, preserve, and support affordable housing at or below 80% of the area median income. The Affordable Housing Trust uses these funds to support various homeownership and rental housing efforts, including the acquisition and rehabilitation as well as supporting efforts of private developers to create affordable housing.
CPA recommendation? Recognize Gary Ellis.
Yep, Gary Ellis, Chairman of CPA. So CPA recommends the article, yes.
Okay. Any comments, questions? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Article 25, CPA Historic Resource Projects Presented by Tracy Post.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move Article 25 as printed in the warrant.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee unanimously recommends.
CPA Committee?
CPA recommends.
Explanation?
This article appropriates CPA funds for historic preservation projects with each item appropriated as a separate project. Project A would provide $17,685 to fund continued grave mark preservation at Ancient Cemetery under the supervision of the Cemetery Department. Since this community volunteer effort began in 2018, almost 850 grave markers have been preserved and a detailed database of documentary information has been built. Project B would provide $73,830 to assess and preserve the 1928 wrought iron memorial arch and the 1886 village water pump located at the bend on Route 6A at Summer Street. The arch was erected around the village water pump by Mabel Simpkins as a memorial to her husband Nathaniel S. Simpkins III. And the Historical Commission has identified both structures as historical assets in need of conservation and preservation.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Ellis?
CPA recommends both.
Okay. Question?
No, actually, I just wanted to make a comment. Christine Greeley, Precinct Six. I want to state that the, in particular, Project A came because of sort of the vision of Pat Armstrong back in 2018 with a team of some of us who were brought together and actually trained and given some supplies, including soft brush and water hoses, to go out and to start the work there. Where it has really, really gotten amazing over the last few years has been the work of Bob Bullock from, or Bill Bullock from the DPW in the Cemetery Department and from Laurel Gable, who volunteers, and Melanie Baron. And it's just an amazing project. I think anytime you're out there working and doing any of the cleaning, you will find people walking through the cemetery who either like being there and are absolutely amazed at what's gone on out there. And when you drive around other communities on Cape Cod and take a look at some of their ancient cemeteries and how awful they look, how dirty. And then when you take a look at what's been going on for now the fifth year in that ancient cemetery, it's an amazing, amazing project. It's been under the hard work of an awful lot of people, including the volunteers and our own DPW staff. So I just commend everybody who's been involved with it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor of Article 25, say aye. All opposed? The article passes. Article 26, another CPA Open Space Recreation Project, Tracy Post.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move Article 26 as printed in the warrant.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee unanimously recommends.
CPA?
CPA recommends.
Explanation?
This project would provide $102,500 to the Friends of Bass River for an upper Bass River watershed restoration project, which ultimately seeks to improve the water quality in Bass River by improved flushing. Data collection funded during the previous grant cycle has been used to help design culverts at North Dennis Road and Weir Road. This grant would fund the permitting of those designs.
Questions, comments? Take a vote, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? The motion carries. Article 27, zoning short-term rentals. Again, to prevent, to be presented by Selectwoman, Tracy Post.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move Article 27 as printed in the warrant.
Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen vote on this article is four in favor, zero against, and one abstention.
Planning Board? Joanne? Yeah. Okay, Planning Board's at five to zero. Explanation?
Explanation, Joanne Crowley, Chair of the Planning Board for the town of Yarmouth. This article would amend the zoning bylaw to allow for short-term rentals while incorporating general provisions to balance and maintain the residential character of our existing neighborhoods and ensure the continued revenue flow to the town from the short-term rentals tax. The short-term rentals tax brought in $1,342,723 to the town in fiscal year 21 with over $1,163,390 already collected this fiscal year through January 2022. These rentals are a vital revenue stream for the town to help fund our wastewater initiative and to improve our estuaries and retain our quality of life. The recent legal case of Styler versus the Zoning Board of Appeals for the town of Linfield in July of 2021 brought to our attention how these rentals are or are not addressed in various town zoning bylaws. Zoning bylaws are a funny animal. If wording or definition is not included in a zoning bylaw, it's not legal. So it's very important that we have language in this article about short-term rentals. Although the Health Department requires annual registration, inspections, and setting of occupancy loads for rental properties, our current zoning bylaw does not expressly define or regulate short-term rentals. Although these rentals may historically have been viewed as customary and accessory, the recent case law brought into question the legality of these throughout Massachusetts. This article would allow for these rentals by right in a simply, in a simple timely manner to avoid problems with upcoming summer vacation rentals in the future and the revenue that they generate for wastewater. Some limited provisions have included, have been included to retain the residential character of our neighborhoods by regulating trash removal, parking, duration of the rental. by regulating trash removal, parking, duration of the rental, and the type of rentals that would be allowed. Understanding that the town may wish to undertake a more detailed review of this process related to short-term rentals, since we put this together very quickly, a sunset clause has been included in the article. Under the sunset clause, this rent, these STR provisions in this article would expire on November 13, 2024, at 11:59, unless amended at a future town meeting.
Thank you, Joanne. Questions, comments? I think we have one.
Stephanie Lewandowski, Precinct 1. I'm wondering if under 418.5 general provisions under trash removal, if there could be an addition that not only that the trash be removed from the premises, but the trash barrels also be removed from the edge of the road?
Mr. Moderator, is she making an amendment here?
Is that an amendment to the article? Or is that maybe an enforcement issue that you'd like to?
I guess an amendment.
Address?
Well, if I may, maybe we don't need one. We have, we have provided for additional enforcement as a result of this new article. And we hope that these enforcement efforts will pay attention to those kinds of things, as do neighbors. Neighbors are sometimes the best enforcers. And as, under the, some of the provisions of this article, we're hoping that the empty containers will be gone. I mean, that's one of the things we thought was very important was trash removal, and that it be done immediately.
And how would that be enforced if it is not currently happening?
It would, an individual would have to report it. Or some, a member of the town who's out enforcing would have to report it.
And just out of curiosity, who is the person in the town that's out enforcing it?
In our Health Department, we are building it. We have, we have health inspectors. And they're in charge of all of the inspections that are required under this amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Greeley?
Christine Greeley, Precinct 6. That's the one thing I very, very strongly support this. I have friends in other communities who've had a nightmare with some of the short-term rentals from Airbnb and things that are going on. And that was the one question I had, I actually went to one of your prior hearings on this, was the whole issue of the enforcement and really making sure we adequately enforce this. And I think it'd be very important maybe to get some notices out or some information to the community as we begin the summer rental system as to who you do report to. In other words, we don't want everybody calling 911. But, you know, who is it that, that I can call when I have trash problems? When there's like overcrowding going on, when there's a lot of bad parking and a lot of bad partying going on at late hours of night. So I think it'd be important maybe to make sure that you really help with getting the information on the enforcement out for people to help support this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick question. Mariana Gresti, Precinct 7. So some of these things don't seem to be actually even enforced for non-short-term rentals. So I'm confused by that. For example, no overnight parking or no tents in yards. So how are we to discern the difference?
I'm sorry, could you just?
Well, for example, in our neighborhood, people park overnight on the street all the time in their residence. Or in our neighborhood, people have tents in their yard for weddings all the time. So I'm curious how, like, why are those rules made for short-term rentals when they're not enforced for just regular daily life?
I'd like to ask Kathy Williams, our Town Planner, to address that.
I think most people in any neighborhood in the Town of Yarmouth know who has a short-term rental. I know all the short-term rentals in my house because you can see it turning over. It's not the same person living there. It's not the neighbor that you know. So when you see something different going on there because you know it's a short-term rental and these things aren't happening, then you have the ability to make a complaint for some type of enforcement. Obviously, if you know that it's not a, it's not a short-term rental and someone's having a family wedding in their, in their, in their backyard, of course, they can have that. That's their own home. It's a short-term rental. These are in residential neighborhoods, and they need to be for residential uses. And renting out your home for a wedding venue is a commercial use and would not be allowed.
Okay. I guess all I'm saying is I would prefer people didn't park overnight in our own neighborhood on a daily basis. But there's, but you know, there's, it's sort of a funny thing that you've created. It's sort of a inverse. But anyway, it's not, it's for another discussion. I was just curious why you were differentiating on some of these funny topics.
One, one of the things that came up with regard to short-term rentals, and we've heard a lot of complaints about them specifically in short-term rentals, is people parking absolutely everywhere. So that was one of the things that we wanted to be sure that we were trying to address in this bylaw.
One more question?
Yes, Dan Burns from District 8. My question is regarding the sunset clause. What happens after November 13, 2024?
The amendment, as the bylaw amendment, if it's approved this evening, would be null and void.
Correct. And what would replace it?
Another amendment, hopefully.
Is there going to be a study done or a committee created?
Ah, yes.
To, to review these items and, and look at it?
Yes. Very good question. We have plans this fall to have a, a meeting among all of the parties that we've already familiar with through our own hearing process on the Planning Board, to have somewhat of a housing and, and summit this fall to review what happened. How are we doing with short-term rentals? Are there things we need to change? It will also address the next amendment that we're going to propose. And so, yes, our plan is to, is to gather some reflective information and make any adjustments that we think are necessary and come back at some point to finalize this. This is really important, that this be codified in the zoning bylaw. In the absence of any language, they're not allowed. It's really important for everyone who uses short-term rentals to help them pay their own bills, to rent out their house for a few, a few weeks in the summer. They go away. They're able to make a little bit of extra money on the side, maybe to pay their real estate bill. The, it's important that this be codified in the zoning bylaw as soon as possible. But we want to do it right. So the plan is to take a look this fall and then come back and, and at some point, move away from having a sunset clause on this and having it be like every other zoning amendment. That's, once it's voted in, it's in. And at every town meeting, at every special town meeting, everyone here has a chance to come in and modify a zoning bylaw. So every two, every, twice a year, we can come in and take a look at this. But our intention is to get this in, get it codified, make sure it's right, and permanente it.
Will, will that be publicized so we can all participate in it?
Absolutely.
In the fall?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We're, we're ready for a vote. All, all in favor? Yeah, this is, I had to, all opposed? The motion carries by a two-thirds majority. Before we get to Article 28, we have three more articles, all to be presented by Selectwoman Tracy Post. And after these three, we're not going to let her present anymore because unfortunately, she's leaving our Select Board. And I'd like to pay tribute to all the work that Tracy has done for this town. And I guess from a personal standpoint, let me just tell you, when I watch, when I am glued to my TV on Channel 18 and I'm watching the Select Board meetings and I hear conversation, I can, whether I agree with her or not, I can almost see the wheels turning in terms of how she's going to respond. And I have tremendous respect and admiration for that. She has represented us as a, as a, as a worker, as a mother, as a, as an elected official, and, and truly loves this town. And I know all the other dignitaries here will feel the same and will say it at some other point. But I wanted, again, this town meeting to recognize Tracy Post.
Thank you. It's truly been an honor, one of the greatest honors of my life. I really appreciate the voters putting their faith in me. And my wheels will continue to spin. And my work for the town will continue no matter what happens. So I am very grateful. And with that, I move.
Present the article now.
Yes. I move Article 28 as printed in the warrant.
Select Board?
The Select Board recommends unanimously.
Planning Board?
Recommends.
Okay, explanation?
Do you want me to do it, Trace, or are you going to do it?
Sure.
You want to flip a coin? No, you can go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you.
By the way, if you want a great career to help out Yarmouth, you start at the Planning Board like Tracy did. We're always looking for volunteers. The business community approached the Planning Board and said, "Help." As we all know, the housing supply on the Cape has dramatically dwindled. Prices have gone through the roof. And tonight, with your blessing, we're looking to tweak an existing bylaw which allows for hotel motels to use up to 15% of their rooms to house workers, seasonal workers, from April through October. The tweak is that in previous years, I think we started this in 2016, if the Smith Hotel wanted to use 15% of their rooms, they would only house Smith employees. This tweak, with your blessing tonight, would allow Smith employees to live there along with maybe employees of the Pancake Man. That is the total difference of what we're doing here tonight. This change will address the temporary housing needs by the J-1 students and the H-2B visas who needed, are needed here desperately to keep our workforce going.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Take a vote. All? Are this a two-thirds vote? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries by a two-third majority. Article 29, Polystyrene Reduction Bylaw, being presented by? This is, I thought Tracy was going to present this.
Mr. Moderator, I'm going to take that.
Tracy, can you present this?
I move Article 29 as printed in the warrant.
Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends.
Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee actually recommends 4 to 0. It does say in your warrant that we recommended against 4 to 0, but we have subsequently met with the petitioners and have had our questions satisfied. So we, as of this evening, voted to reverse our, our vote and are in favor of 4 to 0.
Explanation?
Yes, I'll give the explanation, Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Thank you for the opportunity. As the use and disposal of polystyrene products are proven to have significant negative impacts on marine and land environment of our coastal community, including, but not limited to, one, contributing to the harm of marine and terrestrial wildlife through ingestion and entanglement; two, pollution and degradation of the terrestrial and coastal environments; three, human risk through exposure to harmful carcinogens used in the manufacturing of polystyrene products; and four, the disposal burdens for solid waste collection and recycling facilities. Therefore, the Town of Yarmouth seeks to protect its natural resources and the well-being of its residents by prohibiting food or retail establishments from distributing single-use disposable polystyrene containers through a phase-out period, which would begin, this, this bylaw passed would begin June 1, 2023.
Questions, comments? Yes, ma'am.
Vida Morris. Here we go again. We managed to push back the water bottles a year ago, or, yeah, I guess it was a year ago. I, I just don't understand people, and especially targeting an industry, the restaurants, very specifically. Haven't they suffered enough already during this pandemic? Why do we have to come up with something like this suddenly in this climate and at this time and, and target this particular industry? I, I think you should be ashamed of yourselves to even come, coming up with something like that.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I think, I'd like to respond to that.
Sure.
The Chamber of Commerce has worked with the town in our Recycling Solid Waste Committee over the length of the past year and has done a significant amount of outreach to our business community, which ultimately has supported this bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan?
Tom Sullivan, Precinct 1. One down, one to go. How is this going to be enforced? How are you going to enforce people bringing these products in to go to the beaches? You're going to have health officials walking up and down the beaches checking on it? How are you going to enforce it from people buying products out of town and bringing it to town? They got to take it to the landfill in their house. How's that going to be enforced? I noticed a lot of the commercial stuff, like when you bring in, go to Best Buy and you buy a TV. 90% of the packaging's polyurethane. You got to get it out and break it down. I understand that's exempt. But still, how are you going to enforce the other things? There's no way to enforce this. We don't have enough people on the Board of Health. It says health agents. We don't have enough of them. They doing what they're doing now, especially with this virus that went on. They were overtaxed. But I think, well, the businesses, maybe they could switch to another type of product, which were probably more expensive. And who's going to pay for that? We are, if you service that business. It comes down to whoever buys the stuff. It's going to raise prices. That's all this. Like the bottle bill that we had here to get rid of plastic bottles. That was defeated, thank you, because the aluminum ones are actually more dangerous to the environment and cost more. See, your products of goods would have increased. That's what this is going to do. This could increase the prices at our restaurant. And if anybody's been out to dinner lately, you'll notice the food prices are a tad high. Okay? They have, it's supply and demand. Their suppliers hit them and they have to pass it on to us. And that's all this is going to do. I don't think this was thought out really well enough. So I'm asking people now tonight to say no to this. Or I can make a motion to indefinitely postpone it to have them come back later with more information.
Mr. Moderator?
Yep.
Jill Talladay and the co-chair and the petitioner of the Recycling and Solid Waste Committee. And we do have a short presentation.
Let's see, all right, I'll step back.
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. So this is something, as I said, it's petitioned by the Recycling and Solid Waste Advisory Committee. It's something that we've been researching and doing outreach on for, since 2018. And it's, it is specifically for food-related containers. Next slide, please. So what is polystyrene? It's, it's generally, commonly known as styrofoam. It is a form of plastic that's based on styrene, neurotoxin, and probable carcinogen. And it's used for takeout containers. It is also used for packaging and, and for things like coolers. Next slide, please. So the purpose of this is twofold. It's, we're bringing this before you because we're, we're concerned about the health impact that food placed in these containers can cause to humans. It's, when food is placed in the containers, it can, can leach the styrene into the food that we're consuming. And it's even more detrimental when the food is hot and, or used, heated when the food is in it because it encourages the, the chemicals to, to further leach into the food. It's also not accepted in recycling in, in Yarmouth and actually in most places. It's very difficult to recycle. It adds to, to the litter waste stream. And it's also harmed, provides harm to marine mammals and terrestrial animals when they consume it. Next slide, please. So what we've proposed is to prohibit the use of the, these, the polystyrene for, as food containers. And this would apply to all food establishments. It doesn't impact packaging and, or things like trays that are underneath the, the food that you find in, in the grocery store and partly because it's hard to find something else to, to, to replace that with. And this is 100% supported by the Board of Health. Next slide, please. It's already, it was first passed in, in Dennis in 2017. It's already, it was first passed in Dennis in 2017 without any issues. And in five other towns on Cape Cod, it's been enforced by the Board of Health and in some towns by the police. Next slide, please. So as I indicated, we've been, we did a lot of research. We presented to the Board of Health. We presented to the Board of Selectmen. We presented to the Finance Committee. And the Chamber of Commerce also did research and surveyed of the local, many of the local restaurants. Again, many of them have already switched over. And so we're not finding that it's going to be much of a hardship for them. And I guess when we consider the health impact of the food that would be placed in it, that that's something that we really should consider seriously. And so we strongly encourage you to support this, passing of this bylaw.
Thank you.
Can I just add something, please? Apparently, the Cape Cod Hospital hasn't gotten the message because I understand certainly the cups in which they serve coffee are of polystyrene or whatever it is.
Okay, thank you. One more question?
Yeah, I'd just like to do a follow-up. One question, how are you going to enforce it? You're going to have people coming in? They're going to take this stuff and put it in trash bags or just throw it in the landfill? You, there's no way to enforce this. Health officials don't have police powers. You have to put a police officer up there. What are they going to do? Write them a ticket? Come in and get fined? I don't know if that's possible. But it only affects our restaurants and businesses here in town. Just to follow up with previous speaker, I spent some time recently in the hospital, five days. Everything I got, food and everything, was styrofoam. So...
Yarmouth?
Huh? I know it's not Yarmouth, but some of the stuff I brought home was styrofoam. So where do I dispose of it?
Mr. Moderator, if I may?
So that's the question. How is this going to be enforceable? And if it's going to be enforceable, is it going to be a ticket or it's going to be a fine? I'll end it there.
Mr. Moderator? Chris Vincent from Precinct 3. This has nothing to do with bringing something from outside of Yarmouth into Yarmouth. It's simply regulating the businesses in Yarmouth and prohibiting them from using polystyrene. If you read the warrant, you'd see this very clearly. I'm in full support of this.
Okay, hearing no further questions or comments, we'll take a vote. All in favor of Article 29, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
The motion carries. Article 30, Tracy Post.
Mr. Moderator, I'm going to defer the article to the petitioner.
Oh, petitioner, I'm sorry. Yes, petitioner, Robert Savara. You recognize?
Robert Savara, Cape Cod Commercial. I'm a realtor and a broker. So...
Mr. Moderator?
Hold on one second here, yeah. We need to ask the Board of Selectmen for their recommendation.
Does not recommend, thank you.
Mr. Moderator, the Planning Board does not recommend four to zero.
Okay, planning, not recommend. And the Finance Committee? Not addressed it. So the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen do not recommend. Sorry, go ahead, Robert.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to move the article as printed in the warrant. For a quick explanation, I don't have a presentation, which I'm sure you're all very happy to hear about. Tonight is really not about whether these are developable sites or not. They are already developable sites. Tonight it's about money, town real estate taxes and the owner's money. The three things we came up with, we could do with these two sites, and they're beginning to work together. Seventeen and Eleven Berry Ave are working together.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Moderator, has there been a second? I didn't, I'm sorry, I'm, yeah. There has been a second.
Mr. Moderator, the sound is not coming out of Mr. Savara's microphone.
Maybe I just come a little closer.
There you go, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
So this is, again, it's about money. It's not about wealth. These are developable sites. These are both developable sites now. One is a commercial, one is residential. What I was saying was that there's three uses that we came up with. One was to keep them the way they are, which would produce the lowest amount of money for both the town and the owners. The second was to go with a 40B option, which would be not financially good for the town, but would be the middle of the highest that we could get for value for the owners. And the third would be to, no, the third highest was to be a commercial lot, two commercial lots, which we did get an offer on that and we ran that by some people. And it would generate more like $50,000 in taxes for the town. We need hundreds of millions of dollars to pay for these sewer systems. A no vote today doesn't stop the construction. It tells me that 40B is the next logical solution for this site. So that's all I'm asking, is for the town to send me with some direction. Would you rather see commercial on both these sites? Would you rather see them exactly the way they are? Or would you rather see a 40B? Knowing that we've tried the commercial, they didn't like that, but I brought it back to see if you would like that. And now, the last thing we want to do is to do it the way it is. So the next thing we would try to do would be try to develop another 40B. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Question, comments? I think we have a few. Okay, let me, I'll take you in a second. We have a woman over here? Go ahead.
First?
Need to point.
My name's Barbara Fitzpatrick. I come from District 6. I live on Berry Avenue. When I moved there, there was no gas station on the corner. There was no 99 Restaurant there with curb cuts on Berry Avenue. The proposed changing of this law will turn a piece of residential land into a commercial property, which will benefit the person selling the property and the real estate agent. If he can put those two properties together, it creates almost two acres of land. And it's not to his detriment because he doesn't live in our neighborhood. It's to our detriment. And it's not, it's not environmentally correct, environmentally. We're trying to create a green society. Why do we want to cut down all the trees and put something else there that would create a hazard to our nice neighborhood? Our neighborhood was once quiet and serene. It's not anymore. Expanding this zoning district into an otherwise charming neighborhood is unexpected, unwelcome, and an inappropriate incursion. It's going to create more traffic, more fumes, more, that we have school buses that have to travel that route. Sometimes I wait for changes of the light to get through that intersection now, without another commercial property on the corner with the curb cuts on my street. So I beg the people of this town to please vote this down because it's not to our advantage at all. It's not to the advantage of this town and it's a detriment to the society that live there.
Thank you. I'm going to go with him first, sir.
First? Joe Godridis, Precinct 6. I just want to thank everybody that's stuck around to the end of this meeting for this vote. And I'd like to remind them that apparently seventeen signatures is all it takes to convert a residential lot to a business lot, which affects abutters. Could happen to you if it's going to happen to this lot and the abutters that are affected. I noticed that gratefully, the Board of Selectmen did not recommend this, five to nothing. Would they care to elaborate on why they also don't agree with this amendment?
I think like the previous speaker, we just didn't see the value as opposed to the detriment to the residents.
Thank you. Brad?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Brad Goodwin, Precinct 6. I'm not taking any position on this and I'm not speaking as a member of the Planning Board. I'm just giving you some history. That's the one good thing about serving this lovely town for 30 years. Back in late 1999, maybe 2000, the Doe family came forward to the Planning Board and wanted to put in the 99 Restaurant and the houses behind it. It was a very contentious hearing during that evening. My soul was cursed to hell. The day a drunk driver, I can still quote this, word for word. The lady was at the back right corner of the hearing room. "The day my grandson is run over by a drunk driver leaving the 99 Restaurant, your soul will be cursed to hell." I said, "Thank you, miss." Any other comments? And we went on from there. It passed, of course, and now the 99 is a wonderful place in our town. I've asked people who live in that neighborhood, "What do you think of the 99?" Haven't heard anything about it since. But that night, we had anger and my car was keyed in someone's upset with us doing our job as awarding a license to build on a buildable lot. What I'm saying here is, I hope you just consider, and again, if you vote it down, that's fine. The person who brought it forward has the permission of the landowner, who wants to change his or her lot to business. And in this day and age, where everybody's like, "Hands off my body. Don't tell me what to do with this." Here, the town is telling a landowner what he or she can do with their land. So again, I have no sand in the game, no skin in the game, no nothing. I'm just giving you the history of that area and how you now embrace the 99. And that night back in 99, you wanted to burn all the Planning Board in effigy. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Jim Saban, Yarmouth Port. I too was on the same Planning Board with Mr. Goodwin back 30 years ago. They didn't threaten to key my car, though. The 99 lot was already zoned business. The petitioner is right, this is about money. This is about the money for an individual without regard for their abutters. This may increase the value of that lot, but it's going to diminish the value of all those residential properties that abut it. I created the Community and Economic Development Committee in this town with some others. And I've always been a strong supporter of economic development. But I'm more so concerned about the character of our community. And this community sometimes need to say no to things. And in this case, I think we should all agree with the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen that this is just one of those places that we say no. And I understand that threatening with a 40B, you know, that's just not the right way to go about getting things done. You know, threatening the taxpayers of this town that if you don't do it my way, we're going to do it another way. So my answer to that is, we'll say no now and we'll let you try it another way.
Susan Starkey, Precinct 1. Knowing how important it is to be cautious about any kind of development, whether it's 40B or otherwise, I'd like to propose that we postpone this until the petitioner can provide a detailed enough analysis to give us reason to vote for it. It feels like it's a clear vote against right now, but if there's a good reason for it, I don't see any presentation that gives us that. So people might say, "No, it's too late in the day and we want to go home," but, or that we don't need to do this. But I just want to offer that as a possibility that we could postpone this until there's a better presentation. Yes, I'm making a motion that we postpone.
My mic, there we go. So we'll hold discussion. We have a motion to postpone. And then we'll discuss the postponement. Then we'll take a vote on postponement.
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Robert.
Could I ask a question?
Yep.
This would not change the fact that they have buildable lots and that they would still be sellable and buildable during the time period that this is still postponed? Okay.
Robert, in fairness, I didn't hear exactly what you said. I don't want to be committed to... Where were you, Robert? I didn't, I didn't pick up exactly what you said and maybe everybody else did, but it's only fair to you that, and Mary didn't hear it either, so... Like George Bailey, I don't hear well out of this right ear, so...
I was just saying, these are existing, they are existing buildable lots. And this would not change that they could be sold or built on while this was being postponed.
You'd have to speak to the zoning board about whether that's... I don't want to get into...
It just, this would not change what they are today, that's all. I just want to confirm that. Right, it's residential and commercial now. It would stay that way.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion to postpone. Do we have discussion? I, Tom, your microphone's not on.
I believe the person, the woman who just spoke, made the motion to amend, and I heard a second over here. Oh, no, motion to indefinitely postpone.
Yeah.
And I heard a second over here.
We have that.
So now we go to discussion.
We go to discussion. I'm asking for discussion.
Yes.
I called on you.
Okay, that's all right. We got it straight now. The, I support indefinitely postponing this. I think we're setting a precedent with this article of taking a commercial property and coaching and taking a residential property. That's my precedent. I don't want to see that in this town. Okay, now, I attended the Planning Board meeting and I asked the petitioner what they're planning, looking at if that it was approved and combined the lots. Looking at a Starbucks. Okay? I really don't think we need a Starbucks in Yarmouth since I just recently was just informed that Downby Luke's Liquor in the plaza there with Old Christmas Tree Shop, honeydew's coming in. So we'll have coffee shops, just about everything, almost like drugstores in this town. I do have a suggestion for the commercial lot. And Board of Chamber, Chamber of Commerce might not like it. But the Chamber of Commerce is in a town-owned building. Has been since the police moved out. And I just found out recently, they're not paying any rent to the town. They pay a little bit of light bill, but they don't pay rent to the town. And that space could be used by the town for additional uses. I believe the Chamber of Commerce could use the lot across the street to build a new office for the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
Thank you. So any further discussion on the motion to postpone? Yes, sir. Mr. Saban?
Mr. Moderator, could somebody, maybe Town Council, advise us as to the differences if we indefinitely postpone or if we vote it down? If we vote it down, can they bring it back? Or if they indefinitely postpone it, how long do they have to wait to bring this back?
If you definitely postpone it, drops off, but I'll defer to...
But can he bring, if we indefinitely postpone it, can they bring it back at the next town meeting? Or is there a period of time that they have to wait?
Indefinite postponement would be treated like a defeat, like unfavorable action.
Right.
So the two-year period would apply.
So if we indefinitely postpone it, it would take two years before they could come back and apply again?
It has the effect of unfavorable action.
Correct. Thank you very much.
Goes away. Okay. Yes, we have a comment.
Hi, my name is Christina Dunham, Precinct 3. As far as my understanding of all of this is that as it stands right now, there is a possibility of building 40B housing on that lot. So I just want you to take into consideration of that when you're thinking about postponing this.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. Take a few more, yes, sir. This is on the motion to postpone.
John Seas, Precinct 3. Postponing it indefinitely, I think, just slides, kicks the can down the road a little bit. If we're not in favor of it, kill it. Vote against it. So I'm in favor of defeating the indefinite postponing. Let it stand on its own legs and kill it that way, if that's the way you want it.
Okay, by the way, I should let you know that, not to, not to, this does require a two-thirds vote in order to pass. Yes, ma'am. This will be the last comment on the postponement.
Barbara Fitzpatrick, Precinct 6. This person that owns this property now lives out of state. And of course, the real estate person tends to make a killing on this if he can put those two things together. Now, the, all these buildings around that they're going to build housing, Now, the, all these buildings around that they're gonna build housing, they all say that they're gonna have housing for people that are not well-to-do, not considered low-income, but median income housing. And they use that as a ruse, and then they use maybe three units, and they create other units. But we don't want our neighborhood turned into a commercial, that commercial neighborhood. It's as simple as that. And for someone that lives out of state, why should he get more consideration than we do, who are already there, and multiples of us pay more taxes than he certainly does?
Thank you very much. We have, we have a motion on the floor to postpone Article thirty. All in favor of the motion to postpone, say aye. All opposed to the motion to postpone, say aye.
Aye.
The motion is not postponed. We have no further questions. The motion to approve Article thirty, all say aye.
Aye.
Aye. To oppose Article thirty, say nay.
Nay.
The article fails by a two-thirds majority.
Aye.
With that, with that, we have one more wonderful slide that I really hope you appreciate, and I wanna thank everyone, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to adjourn.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Drive carefully. Thank you.
Make the motion to adjourn, I mean.
Yep. Make that motion.
I never heard...